Okay, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Do we have everybody here? I believe we do. Okay, city council, this is the city council study session, 6:30 PM on October 12th. It's virtual and roll call. Lita.
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcho.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gablin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Okay, pursuant to the governor's emergency proclamation, 20-28, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to this virtual city council meeting this evening. Meeting still accessible to the public and public comment is able to be submitted. Note, the city is now using Zoom webinar to host the public meetings. To join the Zoom webinar on the web, HTTPS, semicolon, forward slash, forward slash, zoom.us, forward slash, J, forward slash, 977-434-76957. By telephone, dial 253-215-8782 and enter the following number, webinar ID when prompted, To view live, use the city website, www.samamish.us/tv21. You can use the city YouTube or Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, the meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Again, the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21. Our YouTube and Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. And since we have a full house here tonight, why don't we have Andrew? Why don't you lead us in the pledge?
Put your hand on your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second.
I have a couple of questions, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
I'm just curious why the athletic field discussion was dropped?
The athletic field, I can probably answer that. Because although it's one of my favorite discussions for time, it is a beefy, beefy discussion. And although it's one of my favorites, and I would have put it at the very top of the list, we had to go by what had to be done tonight. And we were hoping to be out of here by 2 AM.
Okay, I assume then that's the same reason why we dropped the stormwater agenda items, updates on E8 and E9?
Yep.
Is there any place on the city's website where we can get information about what's happening with those projects, or the public can find out since they're kind of big, important topics?
Mayor and council, I think until the agenda items are reviewed by the council, or at least the agenda item is out, we hadn't thought about putting up anything on there. So we'll take a look at that, I'll work with staff and see if it's something that we can get done. And then I'll get back to you all.
Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We have a first, we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next up, we have a presentation this evening. And our presentation is from Jay Kraus from Samamish Plateau Water. And Jay, are you on? Okay.
Sorry, I was on mute. Mayor Jay Reganstrife is also joining me tonight for the presentation. And I'd request that she be added as a panelist also.
Okay.
Also joining us is our board president, Reika Hushangi. Perhaps she can be added also if she's out there in the Zoom world.
Do you see Reika out there? There she is. Okay, welcome, everybody. And with that, welcome JJ and Reika. And with that, Jay, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Please be patient while I attempt to share screen. I am not seeing the permission to share.
There should be a green button down at the bottom of your screen.
Let me make it bigger. I got it, I apologize.
There we go.
Eric, good evening, Mayor and city council members. As I indicated, I'm joined this evening by Jay Reganstrife, the district's planning engineer and board president, Hushangi. And we appreciate the invitation this evening to come have a conversation with the council and share where we are with the district's initiatives to manage sewage capacity, sewage conveyance capacity. We have some good news tonight. Good news is there's been a number of solutions identified. We're currently in the process of implementing them. And we were last here April 6th. And it seems like a long time ago, but actually it wasn't. And there's been a lot of activity on the district's end. And we'd like to share that background with the city council. So back in February, February 22nd, to be exact, the Board of Commissioners adopted a moratorium in the North Sewer Service Delivery area. That area is the northern portion of the district, identified in the pink shaded basins on the graphic I'm displaying. The moratorium initially was put in place for 90 days. Ultimately, it was extended while work ensued from the moratorium, from the engineering contracts that the district engaged in. Ultimately, the moratorium lapsed on August 24th. And it lapsed because of the various initiatives the district reviewed. And we're going to share some additional detail on that with the city council. So since we last visited on April 6th, there's been many activities, much of it is engineering related. And the district has taken a step back. And we've looked at immediate improvements that would bring capacity to our conveyance system in the North Sewer Service Delivery area. Those immediate improvements were shared with the Board of Commissioners in July. Also, in April, we initiated design of interim, which are really permanent improvements that are underway, that are going to be developed and constructed as part of our sewage conveyance system. Those immediate or interim improvements, as we've coined them, were improvements identified in the January 2021 interim improvement evaluation that the district conducted on behalf of King County. Additionally, the district has taken a step back and evaluated infiltration and inflow sources and identified numerous sources of infiltration and inflow that are contributing clear water to the district's sewage conveyance system during the, what we call the peak season, which is the rainy season. And I'll remind the city council, our sewage conveyance concerns only occur when it's raining. It's not during the dry season, we have plenty of capacity there. But we saw some data late 2020, early 2021 that caused the district to take a step back and make sure that we weren't blindly going down a path that could potentially lead to overflows or other unfortunate events. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jay Reganstrife to walk the city council through some of the various improvements that are designed and underway.
Okay, pardon me, thank you. Nice to be here this evening. So Jay, can you perhaps go to, yeah, go to the, from current slide to the left, to the left?
I thought I was there, Jay.
Okay, so the first one, the first improvements I want to talk about are the, what we call the interim improvements. And so I don't know whether you can see my mouse or not, I doubt it. But I'm just going to try and run through and you can follow the arrows on the screen. The interim improvements, we have in different phases. Phase one actually includes two projects. And the first project is the, or the biggest project, is the North Lake Lift Station. And that's the star about midway down the red area along Lakes Samamish. And we're doing improvements to that lift station so that it can have a greater capacity. And those we anticipate being completed by February 2023. In conjunction with that, we're also making improvements to the Central Lake Forest Main. And the Central Lake Forest Main is located, it's a short section south of the southern star on the map there. And those two projects together, they work together. So the Central Lake Forest Main should be done first in February of 2022. But we really don't see the additional capacity until the North Lake Lift Station improvement is done. But those two projects together should increase the capacity of this system by 1,388 equivalent residential units, or ERUs. And an equivalent residential unit is a single-family house. That's the average single-family house. So that's phase one. And again, we're looking at that by February of 2023. Phase two of the interim improvements is improvements to the North Lake Forest Main. It's actually an extension of the North Lake Forest Main, and it's bypassing a gravity section so that we can get more flow from the North Lake Lift Station to the Central Lake Lift Station. And when that project is done, and we anticipate that in June of 2023, we'll have an additional increase of almost 700 ERUs, 694 ERUs in phase two. Now, we've actually identified a phase three of the interim improvements, and that has to do with our North Lake Gravity Main. So that's way up at the north portion of the map. And this is an area where we're not certain we're going to get additional capacity into the entire system. But we have some concerns about the gravity main there. So we're actually doing some more monitoring right now so we can verify its true flow characteristics. So that, we have measurement equipment in there right now. And we'll be working on that as time moves forward and we get more data. So these are interim improvements. Next slide, please. Okay, so now, we're going to talk about the immediate improvements. Because the interim improvements, you'll recall, we don't really get additional capacity till February of 2023. And that means that we need to have something in place that we have a better feeling that we'll get through the next two winters. So we've identified some immediate improvements. And these were identified by the same engineer that was working on, consulting engineer that was working on the interim improvements and our operations staff working together. So the first area that we're putting some improvements in place almost immediately is how we do our operational flows, how we operate the Inglewood Lift Station during high flows. And we can actually reduce how much we pump from Inglewood Lift Stations, so how much flow we're pushing towards the North Lake Lift Station. And in conjunction with that, we're going to be adding some temporary storage. And so this is above-ground storage that we're going to add at the Inglewood Lift Station. And then in conjunction with that, at the North Lake Lift Station, we're going to actually add pumping capacity there by using a bypass pump. And that is something that will bring us an immediate capacity increase of almost 700 ERUs. This is not in addition to the ERUs that we can get from the interim improvements, but it's just getting some of them earlier. So that's a bypass pump that we're going to be placing at the North Lake Lift Station. And we'd be using that bypass pump during high flows. It wouldn't be used during the lower flow periods. But during the higher flow periods, we would put that into use. And then at the Central Lake Lift Station, we're adding some additional temporary storage there. So those are the three pieces of our immediate improvements. And we are hoping to have those all in by the end of November of this year. So a month and a half from now. Next slide, please. So to just kind of summarize the capacity increases that we're seeing here, by November of 2021, we hope to have the immediate improvements all in place. And that would gain us almost 700 ERUs, or equivalent residential units, in the system. And then in February of 2023, when we complete phase one of our interim improvements, we would get an additional 694 equivalent residential units. When we complete phase two of the interim improvements, again, we get an additional 694 ERUs. And then again, with the phase three, looking at the gravity system, we're not anticipating any additional capacity from that at this time. So we get those, all of those ERUs coming through us. But then, we have to use those to get us through until the permanent solution is in place. So that's currently anticipated by King County's, the last thing that they've told us, was that it should be in place by 2030. And that would be the Samamish Plateau diversion, phase one. Next slide, please. Okay, so that's how we're getting additional capacity. Now, we also know that we have other, we have new sewer customers coming online. And while we were in the moratorium, we were not issuing any new certificates of availability or new developer extension agreements, which are associated with short plats, plats, commercial projects going forward in the North Sewer Service area. But we already had some that we had previously issued. And so these are figures that we had in place as of the end of 2020. And there were a total of 388 equivalent residential units in the pipeline. 22 of those were represented by single-family homes that were new homes, not associated with a current development, you know, current plat moving forward. And then for the other projects that were in developer extension agreements, I think that leaves 366. And what we're showing here is the timeline for when we expect them to be coming online. And so, you know, development projects take quite a while to go from beginning to actually having a house there where somebody's moving in and flushing the toilet. And so we had a few that were expecting to be completed in 2021. Those that were in the construction phase, we expected to be coming online in 2022. If they're only under design, 2023. And then if they're still in planning, a couple of years further out. Now, these are averages, things move around a little bit. But that's how we were looking at when we expected to have new customers coming online in the North Sewer Service area. Next slide, please. Okay, so then as Jay noted, we also were working with our infiltration and inflow and not to add additional flow. But how can we look at this and use it to reduce flows coming into the system? So infiltration is basically groundwater that seeps into sewer pipes or manholes through holes or cracks or joint failures. But it's groundwater. Inflow is generally stormwater that flows into the system via roof drains that are somehow connected into the sanitary sewer system, foundation drains, you know, connections of that sort. And in the upper-left corner of this, there's just a diagram that kind of indicates the different areas where INI, or infiltration and inflow, can occur. In the lower-left corner of this slide, the green bars that you see on this graph are actually the flows that come through a lift station. So this is the total flow through a day. And you can see how it changes from day to day. And then the rainfall is superimposed over this in blue. And you can see when we have a large rain event, the flow through the lift station increases dramatically. And so that's, this is how we understand, you know, that it's really the INI that is causing the capacity constraints that we have right now. And so that occurs during the wet weather events. And now I'm going to turn it back over to Jay so he can tell you about our recent INI work.
So in addition to the immediate improvements and the interim improvements that are under design and currently planned for implementation, earlier this month, we completed a field analysis of potential infiltration and inflow using a method called smoke testing, where you interject smoke within the sanitary sewer system, look for smoke coming from places that should not be connected to the sanitary sewer system. And as a result of that analysis, we identified in the North Sewer Service area, 89 potential sources of INI. 16 of them are considered to be significant. We are in the process of following up with those 16 property owners. Those are, and when I say 16 significant, those are 16 significant locations on private property, not public property. We're in the process of following up with those property owners to help them understand, you know, what may be a cross connection to the sanitary sewer system and assisting them in identifying how to abate that. In addition to that, we identified 73 other locations that are potential sources of INI, not as significant as the other ones. 19 are district-owned, we plan on addressing those this winter. Those are primarily manholes. 39 private other facilities, many of them are just missing caps on sewer cleanouts. We are going to be providing caps to those customers because it's more cost-effective and customer-friendly. And then we have 12 others that we need to continue researching in the field. The engineers that assisted in completing that report estimate that those 16 significant private locations alone, if abated, could give us an additional 174 ERUs. So that will bring additional capacity to the system. Our goal is to abate those 16 locations sometime by early December because we would like to gain that added capacity before the rain comes again for the winter. These photos, by the way, are actual photos derived from the field analysis conducted. By the way, you shouldn't see smoke coming out of a gutter. As a reminder to the city council, when we were in, met with you in April, we shared a King County-generated map. They do regional flow monitoring to identify where the regional system experiences high infiltration and inflow. We have a pretty tight system compared to the balance of the region. Anywhere you see yellow and green, it's considered to be minimal infiltration and inflow. Anywhere you see anything that started the shade pink onto dark maroon, that's where there's leaky sewers in the region. That's typically a sign that other sewer utilities are not exercising good stewardship on their systems and maintaining tight systems. In essence, that shifts regional costs to other agencies such as us to operate tight systems. And also footnote, there's a saying in public works that there's two types of concrete, that concrete that's cracked and that concrete that's going to crack. It's kind of the same way with sewers too. You know, sewers don't always leak, but eventually you do get infiltration and inflow. Our low incidence is a combination of a newer system and the fact that we're pretty diligent in the field to maintain the condition of our sanitary sewer system. So moving forward, you know, the district is dealing with a rather dynamic situation. We don't consider any of these initiatives to be one and done. We are going to continue to monitor and measure flows in the system. We're installing measuring, additional measuring devices at our lift stations that are impacted. We're going to continue to observe and assess flows, particularly we want to see the effectiveness of our INI abatement initiatives. We're going to take those flows and benchmark those against the current system capacity and planned system capacity and ultimate expanded system capacity to understand whether our metrics are proper. If for some reason, we see something that is out of line with some of the assumptions we have, we're going to revisit those assumptions. Those assumptions could go, could become more conservative, they could become more liberal. But we're going to base it on data. Good data achieved by monitoring the system through constant monitoring of metrics developed by the district. And so in summary, all of the initiatives that Jay and I reported on, the immediate improvements, the interim improvements and INI abatement are estimated to bring an additional capacity to the North Sewer Service Delivery area of 2,256 ERUs. We view that as very positive. We think we've been successful and found solutions so that the board can have peace of mind and comfort not to continue under moratorium. And we don't know what the city's citywide growth target is. We've heard numbers, but you know, we recognize that, you know, that's a matter of city planning and engagement with King County, King County Regional Council. You know, we've heard low numbers, we've heard other numbers. But you know, we're going to stay in our lane and let the city compare our improvements with what you anticipate your growth targets to be. Additionally, we're continuing to work with King County. King County has previously represented, they will help fund some of the improvements needed to the district system. We're working on an intergovernmental agreement presently with that to secure about $5.9 million of county funding towards our improvements. The balance of the funding would be funded by the district. It will not be assumed by the ratepayers. These are growth-related expenditures, and we do collect capital connection charges. And we are going to be able to finance it internally and do so without any impact to the ratepayers. Ultimately, though, the real solution long-term is for the county to construct regional conveyance facilities that will bring equal levels of service to the district. The last time we were here, we showed a little bit different take on this. But if you look, there's regional conveyance all over the region except in Samamish. And so hopefully, the county can keep their projects on schedule, deliver by 2030, and solutions will be in place longer term, far beyond the year 2030. And so with that, I'm going to stop screen sharing. I can go back if anybody would like ultimately. But I'm going to take it back to you, Mayor Moran, and perhaps you can facilitate any questions that the city council may have. The mayor's on mute.
Oh, you probably wanted to mute me for years. Okay, so we're going to start with council member Ross.
Chris, it's really hard to hear you. Not very well.
No.
No.
Yeah, no, we can hear you.
Okay, so.
Yeah, now I can.
Now I can.
Okay.
Excellent.
Okay. JR, the slide, I think it's a slide after the immediate improvements, it has a timeline of phases, I believe.
Yes.
Turn that up. I just had a question on that one.
Jay, do you want to reshare? That would be slide six.
Well, I thought I had it. Sorry guys.
I can just speak extemporaneously to it.
Okay. What I thought I saw is, if I understood it, the immediate improvements brought forward six hundred ninety-four ERUs, which is the same as the phase two on the interim improvements, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then also, I think on phase one, there was one thousand three eighty-eight ERUs, but on that timeline chart, I thought I saw six ninety-four as well. So I thought I didn't see the one three eight eight on that chart. There should be a grand total of six ninety-four in phase two or immediate and one three eight eight in phase one.
Okay. I know where you're going and I can answer that. So when we started looking at the interim improvements, we were looking at how much flow and how many ERUs, the, you know, capacity we would have from phase one. And you're right, phase one was one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight ERUs. But when we put the immediate improvements in first, we're actually getting six hundred and ninety-four of those early. So we can't, we can't double count them. So right to, with the immediate improvements, we're going to be putting in a bypass pump at the North Lake Lift Station that will allow us to serve an additional six hundred ninety-four ERUs. When we complete the interim improvements at that same North Lake Lift Station, we'll take away the bypass pump and it'll actually be the North Lake Lift Station. So it's, we're just getting of the thirteen eighty-eight that we had shown as phase one, we're getting six hundred and ninety-four of those early through the immediate improvements.
Right. But the grand total on the summary page showed immediate is six ninety-four plus interim of one three eight eights. I just didn't see the two thousand plus on that timeline chart. So it's kind of hard to talk without seeing the chart. But.
Okay. So the thirteen eighty-eight and six ninety-four, doing a bunch of math here, is two thousand eighty-two. So the interim improvements themselves, without immediate and without the INI abatement, would be two thousand eighty-two.
Correct.
And that's one thousand three hundred and eighty-eight from phase one, six hundred ninety-four from phase two. Now, we get almost seven hundred of that thirteen eighty-eight early by doing the immediate improvements.
Correct.
And then we're also getting the additional, I think it was one seventy-four from the INI improvements.
Right. Okay. Everything you said, I agree with and understand from your talking points and all the other charts. Just that one chart, I didn't think I saw that story. That's why.
I didn't have, you know, I didn't put a total or subtotals as we went along. And it also didn't include the INI, the INI improvements. That's actually a chart I'd put together for a prior board meeting. We didn't actually have the INI at that time.
It's not intended to capture the additional thirteen eighty-eight on that chart. And if that's the answer, I'm good. I understand everything you said. It makes sense to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. A great presentation. A couple of questions. Do you know how much capacity we're going to be getting? Like you put it in ERUs, but when you came and talked to us before, you didn't talk in terms of ERUs. You talked in terms of capacity. So could we understand like what this might be like as a percent of capacity so that we understand? And you don't have to do it now. Like it's something we can follow up on. But it just, it just feels like we're using a different set of units now than we used before. And I'm trying to kind of track. And the biggest reason I ask that is because the hundred seventy-four ERUs, if I recall when you were here last time, we determined that we were losing about forty percent of capacity during rain events. And so I know you guys regionally look good, but that still seems like an awful lot of capacity from INI. And so I was curious, you know, do you think that we'll get, like, again, what is a hundred and seventy-four ESUs or ERUs? You know, relative to a percent of the capacity?
Okay. So I can't answer that question just the way you've answered it. I can give you a figure.
Okay.
Because, so when we're going between gallons per minute and equivalent residential units, it's point three six gallons per minute per equivalent residential unit. So that's, that's one answer if you want to go. And so each one of these improvements that I say gives us six hundred ninety-four ERUs, it's about an increase of two hundred and fifty gallons a minute. Okay. So that's, that's where you get that. But people can picture houses easier than gallons per minute. So, so we started talking about it in terms of equivalent residential units. When you look at INI and the, how much of the pipe is used for INI during flow, it is still about, I think it's about two-thirds of the pipe. Don't quote that number, but I think it's about two-thirds of the pipe is, is from the infiltration and inflow and one-third is from the domestic flow. Without, without actually looking at a number, I'm visualizing a picture.
Out of the point three six gallons per minute Jay cited, which is a conservative number, we are assuming infiltration and inflow. That's why when we talk about assumptions, we'll revisit. Out of the point three six gallons per minute per ERU during peak periods, point one three GPM is the domestic flow, point two three GPM is the infiltration and inflow. So we've been very conservative to load it with an assumption that, yeah, sewers are going to continue to leak to a certain measure.
Okay. Do we know how much of the INI is just from groundwater versus stormwater? And the reason I ask that is I'm wondering if any of the areas where you found significant stormwater leakage, which I think is the, is that the inflow?
Yes.
Did I get that right? Where we have significant inflows, do any of those coincide with potential stormwater projects that are on the city's list of things we need to do to better manage stormwater?
There's ways to do it. We did, the board and the district did not opt to move towards a more precise infiltration and inflow analysis that would have, it would have been like four hundred thousand dollars to do that. We would need to have installed flow monitors throughout the area and the board. After comparing prices and seeing some of the feasibility of the immediate improvements, did not believe that was necessary. It doesn't mean that we can't align projects though Pam and understand whether there's an impact.
Yeah, because even if we don't know if it's infiltration versus inflow, if there are any of the, you know, of the eighty-nine potential sources, it would be interesting to overlay that with, you know, stormwater projects that have been identified by the city to see if we need to prioritize any of those higher because there's like a double, a double win. Also, do you have any idea, so you said an ERU is equivalent to a single family home. Do you have any estimates, like if those are multi-family, like how many units it would be?
We do have figures to convert, but I'm not going to come up with them. And it really varies because are you looking at a studio apartment versus a two-bedroom apartment versus a four-bedroom apartment? And the, when we first had multi-family in the district, you know, Providence Point was our, and still probably is our biggest multi-family customer. And the different types of multi-family are now expanding, you know, faster and faster. We're getting more and more. So we just have pretty general figures at this point, just because we don't have a great number of multi-family types to go from, to get you more specific on, on how that, how that would align.
But it would, it would probably be at least a slightly higher number because there would be a range, right? And most of our single family homes are pretty big. And even, you know, so it'd either be the same or more multi-family units, right?
For, I'm sorry.
So if you, if you have like a hundred and seventy-four ERUs, right, from your INI, if it were multi-family as opposed to single family, it would be at least a hundred and seventy-four. Because, you know, generally if you have a multi-family, you have a range.
Yeah, you get more multi-family units per ERU, definitely.
Typically, and this, we're not talking INI from a comparative, comparative standpoint, multi-family dwelling units generate about two-thirds of the flow of a single-family dwelling unit. And again, it's all based upon number of bedrooms, but typically we're seeing about two-thirds of the flow coming from a multi-family dwelling.
And do you get less INI with a multi-family since you have like fewer connections in the ground, right? You kind of have, you know, one big connection from a building, like if you had an apartment building, for example. So would you have less INI potentially or it would be easier to manage or?
You know, that's a tough one.
Yeah, it depends because you get, I mean, the, the length of the side sewer from a building to the main, you might have fewer for the number of units, but you might have quite a bit of pipe within the multi-family site itself. You know, if they've got lots of buildings around and especially the multi-family that are more like townhomes. Sometimes you have a single side sewer for each unit.
That's fair. And then my last question is actually, so again, thank you for this update. So my last question is actually for the city. So given that, that the moratorium's been lifted and we have these numbers giving, you know, more capacity and we used the, the moratorium to limit the amount of housing units that could be built, are we going to go back and update our capacity for, I know, what's the new term? I keep calling it buildable lands report. But we, we assume that we couldn't build, you know, we couldn't add anything in the, in this northern region because of the sewer problems, but we now know that we can add, what is it, twenty-two hundred? And twenty-two fifty-six by twenty twenty-three, right?
I think that discussion is on at the end of our meeting. I think part of that discussion is on later today, so.
I'd still like it if the city manager could answer.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Stewart. I don't have the ability to answer that at this time.
Because.
I don't have the requisite information and I would look to community development. We can take down your question, but to get a spur of the moment answer on that might involve a lot more than just sewer connections and homes. I don't, I'm not prepared to answer your question.
Okay. Oh, I did have one last question and that is of the, for the INI, you had identified eighty-nine potential sources. You're obviously focused on seeing on the top sixteen, which makes sense. It did sound like you were going to continue to look into the others. So that's something where we could potentially see even more capacity coming online over time. Is that, would that be correct?
Potentially.
Awesome. Well, thanks for all of this. Really appreciate it.
Okay. Next would be Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Excellent report. And as a note to staff, I'd like to see the same kind of data from northeast at some point too. Because they're the other third of our city. And the kind of information with respect to INI, to me was very interesting and I'd like to get their view on it too because actually their system, I think, is older than a lot of what some managed plateau has. And speaking of age, that reminds me of something and that is that a system's age, their performance has to deteriorate. If we build to a certain capacity today, twenty years from now, assuming normal routine maintenance, will that capacity be the same or it will be some fraction less of that? And should that then become the, the upper limit rather than the brand new build capacity?
Do you want me to take that, Jay?
You can. Jay and I like when questions are asked because we get to a line to see if we're actually going to give the same answer.
So we're going to just meet over here.
You get in the batter's box first on this one.
Okay. So yes, systems deteriorate as they age. And you expect the INI to go up. In our planning documents, like in the sewer comprehensive plan, we look at existing capacity and we look at capacity as we move forward. And we actually, and this is coming from King County, the basis for this, we assume that the INI is going to increase seven percent per decade. So over the ten years, we would expect an increase of seven percent. Now, we're starting out fairly tight. And then we, we actually, there's a figure that has been around for many years of eleven hundred gallons per acre per day. And that, if we don't reach that using the seven percent per decade, we actually would go to the eleven hundred gallons per acre per day. You know, we could go beyond that at the seven percent, but if we don't reach it, we use that to look at the future capacity of pipes because you're going to have to, you might be improving the system by increasing the size. Eventually you're going to have to be replacing, you know, or maintain, doing something to repair as, as the pipes age themselves.
Jay, can I add to that?
Please do.
Great answer. I agree. You know, there's ways to avoid that though. One is to have a good maintenance program where you televise sewers. We're on a cycle of constantly televising our sewers. I think we're on a five-year cycle of trying to put cameras down. The sewers, we're already doing that in the North Sewer Service Delivery Area. We expect to complete that within the coming months to just make sure there's nothing else we're not aware of. Because of the monitoring that we're going to be doing already with flow meters at lift stations, we're going to have the infrastructure in place to be able to detect that, change our assumptions if necessary. And then unlike, unlike, we're one of the most unique utilities in the region. We have this automated meter, meter infrastructure where we can actually see what the consumption going through a water meter is and compare it to the flows going through the lift station. So we know what, you know, what people are pulling in the house and what's hitting the system. And that is one of the metrics we're going to be looking at. And if we see increased, now increased differential between domestic consumption and what goes through the system, that tells us we've got deterioration somewhere. And by the way, we're going to be, these metrics are permanent. They're not just something that as a matter of convenience, we're putting in place for the next three years. They're something we're going to be keeping an eye on until King County brings a permanent solution to the city and district.
Thank you, Jay. I appreciate that. Experience from the airline industry, every time a jet engine goes through overhaul, a lot of the deteriorated performance is restored, but it never gets back to the nominal as a brand new engine. And every time it goes through, you lose another little bit and then you lose another little bit. Which is why when I ran performance for airlines, I had to factor that in. And my point is here that rather than go right up to the roof of the available ERUs, maybe we want to maintain a little bit of margin there. That's the point of my question. On the issue of the temporary facility at Inglewood, how big is that going to be and where is it going to be?
The temporary storage?
Yes.
I believe it's twenty-one thousand gallons. And it's, trying to picture this in my head, somewhere near the actual lift station. I'm sorry, I don't have that mapped in my head and I, unless Jay knows. Our operations manager isn't, isn't with us tonight. But it's on our lift station site.
The lift station site's right by the commercial area, is it not?
It is a little bit west of the commercial area, yes.
Okay. There's also a residential area around that too, so.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Then next I've got Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Jay and Jay for coming in. Honestly, this is an absolute head scratcher for me on why we transitioned from gallons per minute, which is. head scratcher for me on why we transitioned from gallons per minute, which is very measurable, to ERU. But be that as it may. So, two thirds of the flow of the pipe during rain is from INI, and one third is from houses. Can you tell me, last winter, when we had failures or near failures, what was the gallon per minute for the system that caused that failure or near failure?
So we didn't have a failure, just to clarify.
Failure.
What we had done was we had set triggers, and we surpassed the trigger. But we didn't have a failure.
Okay. But what was the gallon per minute on to get us to the trigger?
1,200 gallons a minute was the trigger.
Okay.
And we surpassed that. I believe the highest number was 1,400 gallons a minute.
Okay.
Try and pull that up.
Okay. What would cause a failure? What would cause the system to overflow?
Getting too far beyond the ability of the pumps to move it downstream with not enough storage in the wet wells and the system itself to manage that before we could pump it.
Right. I understand the cause. What would be the gallons per minute? How far above the 1,400 were we quantitatively to go before we would have a failure?
I don't have a number for that. And I'm not certain because every storm is different. And sometimes it's how fast is it coming, and what time of day is it coming? And how long does it last is the is the biggest thing. It's how long can you hold it while you're pumping pumping it out? And I don't I don't have a figure.
Okay, so if we have 1,400, the system, we have a 21,000. So we can't take a really super long amount of overflow or overcapacity for the system to fill up that storage. My question is, what I'm looking for is a quantitative report rather than a qualitative report. So when we're talking about adding ERUs, that's only one third of the capacity of the system. The real gorilla in the room is the two thirds of the system that's added by the INI. So what I'm trying to find out is, last year, we had events that brought you to above your whatever bench points that you're comfortable with, 1,200 GPM, and it got up to 1,400 GPM. Somewhere above 1,400 GPM, you have a failure. You have sewage either overflowing, back flowing, whatever that back pressure is going to do, whatever all the failures. You guys know the terminology for failure. What are you basing that you have fixed the problem for this year? At what level of flow and at what level of storm can you handle to be comfortable that these fixes are actually going to fix this year quantitatively? So is if we have a storm, the equivalent of last year with that kind of flow from INI? If we have that again, you feel that the fixes will allow you to have a higher flow than 1,400? What did you put into your model as what is the flow for this year? Did you expect a dry winter? Do you expect a medium winter? Do you expect a wet winter? And at what point would you expect that fixes you're put in to be insufficient? I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm looking for some quantitative gallons per minute numbers because the ERUs are not the problem. The problem is the flows from INI. That's what's going to come and bite us. So if we were at 1,400 gallons per minute last year, how much improvement gallons per minute will your fixes that you're doing for for this year? How much will they improve that? Will they give you an extra 100 gallons per minute? Or extra 200? Do you and what assumptions are you making for this winter and next winter? That these improvements will be sufficient to get you through?
Okay, so two, hopefully not two simplistic answers. We're improving the flow that we can put through the Northlake Lift Station, which is where we have our pinch point, by 250 gallons a minute. Okay, so there's that's, that's where we're getting the additional capacity by being able to pump more through the lift station.
And Jay, where's that going? Where's that additional 250? Where's it going to?
It well, it will go to Central Lake Lift Station and then down into the King County system.
Okay, so it's kind of pumping it around the choke point?
Well, it's pumping-
Discharging it to the system. It's discharging it to the system that exists, that functions.
We're we're improving what we can pump at the Northlake Lift Station.
Improving the volume of what you can pump.
Yes, yes. And recall that the I know we're talking about it in terms of ERUs, but as Jay described, the ERU, our 0.36 gallons per minute per ERU includes both domestic flow and infiltration and inflow. It's both pieces are in there. So every ERU that we say we add into the system, we're assuming more infiltration and inflow. Now, as far as the storms and what are they going to produce, I just saw a headline today that says this is going to be a wet winter. We don't know. What we are doing with our immediate improvements is, you may recall at Inglewood, one of the things that we're able to do there is actually decrease the volume that we're pumping out of Inglewood, which then heads to Northlake, which then heads to Central. It's a serial pumping system. So that's one thing that we can do at Inglewood, where we have sufficient storage right now, is we can actually hold more there, pump it out more slowly if we need to during the peak storms. And we're starting to watch the storms, you know, we watch the forecasts as they're coming at us so that we're prepared to take the steps to lower the pumping volume at Inglewood if we need to, to actually put the additional storage online. So those are all operational things. It takes more effort from from our sewer operations crew to happen. But even though forecasts are just that, they're forecasts, you do have a little bit of a look ahead. We don't get too many big storms that just hit us completely unawares.
And Jay, the 0.36 gallons per minute is not assuming it's going to be a dry winter. It's based upon the peak events. So again, as as we've talked about revisiting assumptions and metrics, if we abate all the INI and find out that an ERU is really 0.3, then it's 0.3. We adjust the assumptions. If we find that we have extreme events and it's a 0.4, then it's a 0.4. And we go back and we revisit how many connections the system can serve.
Okay. One last point. So what basically we're saying is, extreme weather is extreme weather, and it can add a whole bunch of gallons per minute, and you just have to try to work as best you can to deal with that. Okay?
Basically.
Okay. How did we get to the point that we are, our tolerances during peak events are this close? And we don't have a whole lot of buffer or very much buffer at all? I mean, in the perfect world, I would imagine, you know, there'd be a lot more capacity to handle peak events. Can we speak at all at how we didn't get to improve over the years to to have a bigger capacity at this point? Or is that something for another day?
I can answer.
What, Jay?
I said, I can answer.
Go for it.
I've been here since 1987. Okay. Yeah, 87, long time. From the time I've been here, we've been trying to work with King County on where our sewage flows should go. And every time we did a sewer comprehensive plan, we'd say our our first connection is to the south. Should we direct everything to the south, even though the plan that King County had from the 1950s said, no, you know, from the 1950s, literally split the district into into part going north and part going south. And so in 1989, when we were designing the lakefront system as part of our utility local improvement district test 10, we asked the question again, and they said, no, you can take it to the south for now, but we're going to need it to go north. So we didn't overdesign that system to take all of this projected flow to the south because it was supposed to go to the north. And it's been promised to have it in there. Well, the last one was 2018, but I think it was even as early as 2000. I've been here too long. I forget the dates. But anyway, the system design that we're dealing with right now was never intended to take all of the flows from the north area to the south. That's the short answer.
That's Jay. Jay's very kind. Regional sewage conveyance is to Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer as public transit is to the city of Sammamish, underserved. There is a point when you're part of a regional system, you have to have a reliance that someday, Big Brother will perform. We thought we had a commitment from the county, and they retracted it. So now, and not and then their mantra is, it's a local issue. Well, this wasn't a local issue before. Now it is. And we're managing it.
Yeah, the problem, Jay, is, and so again, not yelling at you two at all, problem is, if if the transit doesn't work, people stand and wait for the next bus. If the sewage doesn't work, it's a lot worse problem for the people who live here than waiting for the bus or deciding to take their own car. They got to put a sewage in their basement or first floor. So I understand your statements. It still makes me kind of scratch my head a little bit when a permanent fix is 10 years down the line. So again, we don't need to go into it now. But thank you both for coming. I know this is probably makes you pull your hair out 10 times more than it does me.
We all have issues. It's it's so challenging in local government. And, you know, community development and planning and growth management are the most volatile issues a community will deal with.
Okay. Well, we'll cross our fingers for a dry winter. How's that?
Dry winter and a half.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay, well, then I'm going to follow up and probably looks like I may, oh, no, we've got more questions. But okay, I've got a couple of questions, and they're relatively easy. My first one is, we're back to the northern diversion. And now we're talking 2030. And you guys both know my thoughts on the northern diversion. So I'm going to I'm going to just ask, is there money put toward it at this point in time? And that's question one. And two, if not, is it in the budget for this year?
So the county is, this is from the county, what they've told us, that they currently are working on the getting ready for design. I'm not, I can't remember the words that they use. So they are spending some money right now. But the funding for the northern diversion has to go through the county council, and I believe it's in their 2022 budget. And my recollection is that by the beginning of 2023, we should know whether it's funded.
Okay. 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 And then the next question is, Jay, you had said that a multifamily ERU is equivalent to two thirds of one ERU. And we are seeing some of the ERU, some of the multifamily stuff that's coming in now, some of the townhomes and stuff like that that is being proposed are 4,000 square feet, and basically are a single family home. So I'm just wondering, when you tell me that they are, it's based, the two thirds of a ERU, what is it? What is it based on?
Currently, we're looking at meter size that's utilized. Now, with the larger, and some of the townhome projects that we have currently in Sammamish, each unit actually has their own meter. So they are counted as if they were a single family.
Okay.
So if they're using a three quarter inch meter, that's it. A duplex might use, or a triplex might use a one inch meter, which would be two and a half. It's when you get to the bigger buildings with the smaller units.
Okay.
That's where the the figures get. I'm not sure if I should be saying smaller or larger because it's all in your point of view. But anyway, that's that's where it gets different. And as we get a different, a wider stock within the city, we'll probably be looking at that more, instead of trying to group them all together.
Right.
We'll be looking at them more.
So you'll be able to, so when you're talking, because we've got some that are four bedrooms and, you know,
Right.
as big as my house, down to, you know, some that are, you know, 1,600 square feet, and some that are, you know, down at, you know, 1,200 square feet. So.
Right.
Okay, great. Okay, that answers that question. Okay, so then we have, is there anybody else before I go on to doing a second round? Anybody that's got a question? Okay, Deputy Mayor, you look like you're looking for a button. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I was just, I'm like, where's that raise hand feature? No, I first, I just want to say thank you to Sam Platt for coming this evening and giving us this presentation and just kind of giving us an update because it also helps inform the general public about what's going on. And secondarily, I appreciate that you guys are doing what you can, given your constraints, and that the county has really kind of left you with the bag to hold, which is unfortunate, but appreciate the work that you all are doing, given your constraints. So I'm listening. I'm taking it all in. I don't really have any questions right now. I think my fellow councilmembers are asking good questions. But I think, you know, it's goes without saying that the county has really left us in a unfortunate predicament. And I know that you guys are doing the best you can, given the circumstances. So thank you.
Okay, and then last, we will have Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, great. Thanks. I just wanted to get clarification. So to be clear, your, you know, your kind of margins or margins of error, right, are good in that we we hit and exceeded a trigger, and we still didn't have a failure. So like, you guys are managing this really conservatively, which you should be, right, to make sure that failures don't occur. Would that be accurate?
It's certainly our goal.
Yeah. So I mean, like, again, you know, we had excessive rain events, and flows went up a lot, and there was no failure. So I just want to kind of give kudos to you guys that, you know, that's what systems engineers do, is you build in lots of factors of safety and margins of error so that failures don't occur. A couple of questions around the King County and the funding, which is, you know, maybe we should be using our lobbyists to lobby King County to get to get this funding, right? So as we talk about our legislative priorities, maybe we don't just have them lobby the state legislature, but they can lobby King County as well. And I thought that the ARPA funds could be used for infrastructure like water and sewer. So it seems like there's an opportunity here for us to get the county to get this funded. And they're they're getting large sums of money from the federal government that could help with that. With what, I mean, do you know anything about that? But I just feel like we could help to advocate for that. Yes?
Jay?
I I think it'd be wonderful if the district and city could align on this issue. I think we'd probably need a little bit deeper discussion, though, because there's some other interesting elements of it. But our interests are aligned. And anything we can do to support each other's in community development, and frankly, get a return for our customers and taxpayers from what is paid into the county would be wonderful.
Can can you be a little less mysterious about what some of those other factors might be?
There's other options. There's other options that are perhaps less disruptive to the community than- to the community than the Sammamish Plateau diversion, maybe more cost effective, maybe a better long term solution. And, you know, I think it'd be a great conversation to have.
Okay, well, maybe, you know, we'll have a conversation later. But since this is such a big issue, and we do have lobbyists, this seems like an opportunity where we can kind of help here. And again, there's a kind of a once in a lifetime opportunity where the federal government's kind of handing out cash for infrastructure projects. So I think we should seize the the moment. And then one last question, I know that only a third of the capacity is actually for usage, right, and two thirds is for I and I. But what about, you know, policies that we could implement to reduce the use of water, right? You know, there are all sorts of of things that would, you know, be better for the environment and, you know, reduce the usage, like recirculation for, you know, hot water, so that we don't spew, what is it, like, two gallons a minute down the shower while we're waiting for the water to get hot and things like that. So would any of those things have a meaningful impact? And are those things we should also be considering, which, again, could have a double win?
Jay, I'm gonna let you respond to that because you're a little bit closer to development and code applications.
Okay, so yeah, the the there are things, you know, conservation, water conservation in general is part of our plan, both on the water side and on and on the sewer side. And generally, you know, there's two things. There's plumbing. Well, there's many more than two things. But there's there's actual hard things like plumbing and having lower lower flow showers and lower flow toilets and all that stuff. And that has actually made a huge difference in the in the amount of water going through both the the water system and the sewer system on the other side. And so those things that get implemented into new houses and and even in the old houses as they're getting updated and remodeled, those really do make a difference. And then the other side, of course, is, you know, convincing people to take shorter showers and to utilize the low flow features and just how they're how they're managing their water use. And we we do that, and we work with that. And one of the and so yes, that always has a benefit on on both sides. And one of the main things that we've actually been doing at our district, again, back to Jay mentioned, our AMI program, because now people, when they go on to this, on to their, they can monitor their own use and see it. And the other thing is that we find leaks much, much faster. So we're able to then have people reduce their use that way. That's kind of a water answer, but.
Oh, I would love, Jay, maybe you and I could talk more because I do think there are some things we could propose, you know, from a city, right, where we partner with you guys to work on that conservation, not the least of which is if you have a website where people can monitor their water usage, like, that's something we should be telling the kids. Like, kids love to do that kind of stuff. So we should be doing like these education programs, getting the kids to be like, hey, get your parents to use less water. I guarantee you, that's, you know, some of the the cool stuff. So I would love to work with you. I work with a number of environmental youth groups in the region and in Sammamish. So I'd be I'd be really game on on kind of doing that and maybe even finding ways to help them have a competition, you know, who can reduce their water usage the most over, you know, the school year or something, and see what people can do. So nothing like having people measure it and have a little competition to to do water conservation. And then the last thing I'll just say is, I don't hope it's a dry winter. We need the water to get through the dry summer. So I'm not going to hope for a dry winter, because if we have another summer like the last one, and with climate change, I don't foresee us not having one, we're going to need that water. So we're just gonna we're just gonna do this and make it work. So thanks again.
Councilmember Stewart, if I may, I just wanted to follow up on your first comment. I know I speak on behalf of the board, and we would love to get together and even do a joint meeting with City Council to discuss, obviously, capacity and any other issues because I think we're way overdue for one of those. So
Well, and
appreciate you guys having us here today.
Yeah, and right. I think you guys do a great job with going out and into the community and going to, I know you've got folks that go to the schools and and already work in the classrooms and and get all that information out. I do think you do a great job with that.
Thank you. We do have a great communication team that does that. Thanks.
Well, thank you for joining us this evening and great presentation. And it was good to see you.
Thanks, Karen. Thanks, City Council. I hope your evening doesn't go too long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, the next up, we've got a couple of proclamations. And the first proclamation, and Councilmember Ross, I'm hoping you've got this up on your screen, is the King County twenty twenty-one Executive Award for the Community Resilience.
Okay.
And I was hoping you would read that for us.
Whereas it is in the interest of all people and communities within King County to develop the highest level of competence in preparing for and responding to emergencies and disasters. And whereas King County continues to be tested in unprecedented ways by the COVID-19 viral pandemic, including economic distress, dislocation, illness, and the death of far too many of those whom we love and cherish. And whereas low income residents and communities of colors have been disproportionately affected by COVID-19. And whereas the response has required an unparalleled unity of effort drawn from every sector of our community. And whereas many people and groups come together to form the Snoqualmie Tribe Vaccine Partnership, including Eastside Fire and Rescue, the city of Sammamish and Issaquah, Washington State Parks, with the support of King County Emergency Management and Public Health, Seattle and King County. And whereas hundreds of volunteers come together, bring tens of thousands of COVID vaccines to the people of East King County. And whereas the Snoqualmie Tribe generously provided these vaccines to people living in the Snoqualmie Tribe's ancestral lands. And whereas many of the innovative innovative standards and practices developed through this effort will be applicable to future emergencies. Now, therefore, the King County Executive Dow 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 Constantine hereby recognizes the Snoqualmie Tribe Vaccine Partnership for its superior performance in responding to this region's needs during the COVID-19 viral pandemic as an honored recipient of the two thousand twenty-one Executives Award for Community Resilience. I encourage all King County citizens to follow the example set forth through this collaborative effort to respond and recover from COVID-19 pandemic. Signed by Dow Constantine, King County Executive.
That's excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, then the next one we have, and I believe we have Chief Clark. Chief, are you there? He is. Hi, Chief.
I am sorry. Took me a second to get on here. You hear me okay?
Can hear you.
All right. Well, I've kind of got a dual capacity tonight. And thank you for taking the time to recognize a couple of Eastside Fire and Rescue employees. But I'm also currently the president of King County Fire Chiefs. And last month, we were able to recognize a number of people throughout the county. And there were six letters of commendations handed out countywide, two of them to our members. And I'd like to first congratulate Battalion Chief Huffman. And I'll read his letter, and then I won't repeat on the next. But the King County Fire Chiefs Association is honored to recognize individuals within the fire service for exceeding the duty requirements expected of their position and who have demonstrated a distinct pattern of community service coupled with professional achievement. On behalf of the King County Fire Chiefs Association Executive Board, it is my pleasure to congratulate you on being selected for a letter of commendation for your exceptional and sustained performance during the COVID-19 pandemic. Your outstanding demonstration of leadership within your department and the community you serve is to be commended. We value the amount of effort you have put into your work. You are significantly appreciated as part of the King County Fire Service Team. And that that same commendation went to both Battalion Chief Glenn Huffman and Emergency Manager Andrew Stevens for their work, because specifically as leaders of the Snoqualmie Vaccine Partnership. I want to state that in Battalion Chief Huffman's case, there was absolutely no stone left unturned as far as advocating for these vaccines throughout the county and soliciting folks within our communities on who should be vaccinated, what their priorities are, and ensuring that a vaccine went there every time. And I will state, and I'm pretty sure this is true all the way to the end of of the several months that we ran this, not a single dose of vaccine was wasted. And that's a tremendous feat, considering every time you opened a vial, you could get eleven doses if you did it right. And you had to time it perfectly and make sure you always found someone to put an arm in. So or put the needle into an arm. So and Glenn was instrumental in that. And then as far as Emergency Manager Andrew Stevens goes, he is absolutely hands down, in my thirty-one years in the fire service, the most talented emergency manager I've worked with. And he demonstrated on this CPod. He was asked to coordinate the CPod effort even before the Snoqualmie Tribe had joined. He laid out the agreements, the coordination of the efforts at the state park, an agreement with the state park in record time. And if you've ever worked with the state park system, you know, you don't get agreements quickly. He had it nailed down in about 10 days. And then all the logistics that went into this, his talents as a coordinating emergency management function, we're truly lucky to have him here. And he too lived up to this and was was part of it. And he had a little story that, at least from Eastside, in the press release that went out, where a dog helped deliver a vaccine. It calmed an individual down. I'm sure many of you saw it on the news. But that personal touch that he added fit right into the culture of both Eastside Fire and Rescue and Sammamish. So thank you for the time to recognize these individuals on behalf of the King County Fire Chiefs Association and Eastside Fire and Rescue. I want to thank Battalion Chief Glenn Huffman and and Emergency Manager Andrew Stevens for their efforts.
Thank you both very, very much. You did an excellent job.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and Chief Clark, and Council, and City Manager. Really appreciate all the support you guys gave us throughout this entire operation.
Thanks for the hard work, Andrew.
I just would comment that you both did just such such an outstanding job. The east side of this county is covered and vaccinated in large part because of the efforts of you two men and the crews that you directed, our elderly, our infirm, and all of the folks so they didn't have to drive to Seattle. Just, thank you is not enough. But the community really does thank you.
And our seniors, that so many didn't even have to leave their homes. So thank you so much.
I'm amazed that no doses were wasted. That's really impressive.
Wonderful job, guys. Thank you.
So I don't think we could thank you enough for all the work you did. Thank you. Okay, moving forward, that was, we have got one more proclamation this evening. And that is a proclamation on substance abuse. And do we have somebody who wants to volunteer to read that this evening? Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
Yep, here we go. City of Sammamish Proclamation, National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas far too many of our young people do not develop the skills needed to productively manage adolescent development substance free. And whereas substance use can and does negatively impact the development and potential for our youth to succeed. And whereas substance use prevention has a greater impact than later intervention by changing a child's early life path away from maladaptive solutions and towards positive behaviors and productivity. And whereas substance use prevention is an extremely cost effective model in comparison to later high utilization interventions. In general terms, savings of up to $10 or more for every dollar spent on effective programming. And whereas the benefits of increasing protective factors while reducing risk factors and engaging social emotional learning provides a universal benefit to all our youth. And whereas by stopping the drug use before it starts, we can prevent the disease of addiction and create stronger neighborhoods in our community. Now, therefore, the Sammamish City Council to hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-one as National Substance Abuse Prevention Month. And I would just add that I think we need to put our money where our mouth is and really make sure that we are doing more. We know that drug use and drug addiction is a huge problem in our community. And I'd like to see us do more. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Stewart. Okay, and that brings us to executive session. And our executive executive session this evening is under potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty one one zero one I. And to to evaluate, to evaluate complaints or charges brought against a public officer or employer pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty one one zero one F. So it is eight o'clock. I'm thinking it's going to be an hour. So let's plan on being back here at nine o'clock. This is the City Council Study Session of Tuesday, October 12, 2021. And it is a little after nine PM. And we are extending our study session this evening. We are in executive session until nine thirty. Again, this is the City Council Study Session of October 12, 2021. We are extending our executive session this evening until nine thirty PM. Thank you. Okay, we are getting back from executive session to our City Council meeting of Tuesday, October 12. And the next thing up on our agenda for the evening is a presentation from Management Partners Financial Forecast Model.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take a moment to make a couple of comments and then introduce some staff. Good evening, Councilmembers and public who have joined us this evening. For just a moment, I want to take you back to the fall of 2020 and the significant changes I ask you to consider making regarding the biennial budget. I try to raise the level of concern over cash flow and the use of reserves to build a budget that was reliant upon those reserves to sustain growing service levels to the community that needed some more sustainable stream of cash flow, in my opinion. There were many difficult choices, but none were yet fatal or would degrade service levels in this biennium. Just decisions that would begin to make a make necessary choices or highlight the need to make fiscal choices soon, whether they be service level reductions or tax increases to catch up on to catch up a growing organization and the growing demand for increased service levels. Those decisions are the council's. We, as staff, just try to highlight those so informed decisions can be made with the best available data. The council voiced a desire to have a model that would assist them in future years with budgeting and to provide information that the council could use to forecast how it might get to a sustainable budget position and how far into the future that break even or sustainable budget might be that could be attained. This evening, you will see a presentation of a fiscal modeling program that has a proven track record with other public agencies, but is built entirely from data. track record with other public agencies, but is built entirely from data and informative assumptions specific to the city of Samamish. The model was created by the national firm Management Partners under the direction of Partner Steve Toller and Senior Management Analyst Claire Coleman. As I stated, the model has a high level of validity because it is built on widely-used best practices and guidelines set by GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association. It uses only City of Samamish data from the past 10 years and the most current information from the city's budget documents. It makes and/or uses reasonable assumptions on growth levels, for example, but those can be altered so the council can immediately see fiscal impacts in many of the assumptions it has control over. It will look very familiar as it is your budget, just transferred from data on paper to a fiscal model that will allow you to alter parameters and/or change assumptions that will directly impact future cash flows and surpluses or deficits. While it will appear that we are talking about our current budget, we are not, as you will not be burdened this evening by the tough decisions that come with the debate and decisions of a budget development process. That fund starts next week. What it is, though, is the same data showing you just what impacts you might expect from certain decisions and assumptions if they were, in fact, adopted. You are not asked to commit to any of these assumptions, as this is a study session, an introduction to a modeling tool that will significantly assist you to see the possible future outcomes of decisions that you may or may not choose to take at a future meeting. The historical data is real, however, and the history and real data give the model validity and clarity that is extremely difficult to conceptualize without such a tool. Now let me turn the meeting over to Assistant City Manager and Finance Director Erin Anton for his comments and to introduce the Management Partners team and their presentation. Thank you.
Welcome. This is Erin Anton, Assistant City Manager, Finance Director for the city. I just briefly want to state the overview of this discussion tonight and presentation from Steve and Management Partners is the financial model, which is a decision-making tool that they have created. We've worked hard to respond to all the data requests as the 10 years of data that Dave just referred to and all of the other financial data imports were included in the creation of this model. So, all of that was an import into this modeling tool. So, without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Steve from Management Partners. Go ahead, Steve.
Great, thanks, Erin. Good evening, everybody. My name is Steve Toller. I'm a partner with Management Partners, and I'm joined tonight by Claire Coleman, one of our senior management analysts. And we're honored to be able to support you in the creation of your fiscal model that will hopefully be very helpful for you in terms of informing you as decision-makers about really where the city stands fiscally, particularly as it relates to the general and streets fund. So, without further ado, let me go ahead and share that screen. And I just need to do a couple of moves around so that I can see you all again. There you are. So, what we'd like to go over tonight is briefly share with you some of the key drivers in developing the city's street and general fund forecast. And then, we're going to go right into the model so you can see kind of the interplay of all the data and how it will inform decisions that you will be making, starting as early as next week and in future months and years ahead, in terms of ensuring that the city is able to provide the services that it needs to provide to the community with the blend of the various fiscal resources that you have to support that. So, what I'd like to do is just briefly, Management Partners is a firm that works exclusively with local government, and we have been serving cities all across the United States and helping them do financial forecasts and fiscal models. Claire and I specifically have been supporting the cities of Tenmore, Newcastle, Mercer Island, and King County. We've also been supporting Yakima and a few other cities within the Washington State area. So, we're very familiar with Washington State finance, so some of the peculiarities that you are all facing in terms of ensuring that you have the financial resources to provide the services that you need to. So, let me turn it over to Claire, who's going to cover some of the key drivers, and that I have the fortune of displaying the fiscal model for you so you can see how it works. Claire, go ahead.
Thanks so much, Steve. Good evening, everyone. So, we want to start off by talking a little bit about financial forecasting in local government, so a little bit about how these tools are used. It is a tool to inform and assist decision-making. It is not, we can't tell the future. I think if we could tell the future, we would be playing a lot of things in the stock market, maybe. But it's a tool to inform decision-making and to look at trends, and it's a tool to use to, as you're considering your budget process, to build different scenarios and really help you make those decisions. And then, financial forecasting is really a best practice of sound financial management. And so, that's what we're here to talk with you today about. The things that make them useful, there are three key tenets that we focus on, which are credibility, so that it is transparent, descriptive, and based on reasonable assumptions. It's understandable, so it needs to be clear and tell a story and the implications of these different decisions that you might make as a council. And then, link to sound fiscal policies, so reserve policies, long-term fiscal planning, and all of those different key components that go into keeping a city healthy. So, some of the things that are within the city's control and some of the things that are outside of the city's control, what you can control are things like fees and charges, service levels and levels of service, excuse me, services and levels of service, service delivery models, employee compensation, and infrastructure investment. Some of the things that are outside of the city's control are things like recessions, private investment in development and retail, bond market interest rates, and emergency events and response. The city can prepare as much as possible, but emergencies happen, and they're not something that is really within the city's control. So, as we're looking to Samamish's specific model, we want to talk a little bit about the past and about some future considerations. So, in the recent past, the city has taken a conservative budgeting approach, and as a part of that, revenues have been typically underestimated, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as we're showing you the model. Another piece of that was that expenditures have consistently been budgeted higher than actuals, and some of the reasons for that have been high staffing vacancies, so over 10% for the past few years, and some project and program deferrals or delays, so not all of those budgeted expenditures have been used on an annual basis. And then, as we look to the future, the contingency budget that has been used in the past has been eliminated for fiscal year '21 and '22, and the revenue forecasting is getting a little bit closer to the actuals. It's getting a little bit more accurate and specific. The staffing vacancies do still exist. It's about 15% right now, but there are things like weather-related costs that are highly variable. A big snowstorm will have a really big impact, and that's not something that the city can fully predict. And then, expenditure growth has outpaced revenue growth, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that as Steve goes over the model. And then, population growth with the annexation and the changes in the population of Samamish, that places new demands on services that often outpace revenue growth, and we'll talk a bit about that later as well. So, some foundations and key drivers of this fiscal model. So, as your City Manager and your Assistant City Manager Finance Director have both mentioned, it uses extensive historical context. We've included at least 10 years of your data in this model. It's based on '21 and '22's budgets, and we're going to refine it for the '21 projections. It includes your reserve goals and policies and some influence of also GFOA-recommended policies, unique assumptions for all revenue and expenditure categories, and those are things that can be adjusted as needed and used to build scenarios, and then a dynamic dashboard to see the impact of those assumptions and budget strategies and to make it really clear visually and numerically what that could potentially look like. Then, on the revenue driver side, there's the property taxes. Property taxes are the largest component of Samamish's revenues, and you have two major components, right? The council manic increase, that's subject to the 1% cap annually, and then the banked capacity utilization. There's the sales tax receipts, and then development services, fees, and charges. And then, on the expenditure side, the largest portion, as with really every local jurisdiction's, personnel costs, cost of living adjustments, vacancy rate assumptions, healthcare costs, and other benefits. It's really the bulk of city expenditures is for the people who make the city run. And then contracted services, police with King County, fire with Eastside Fire and Rescue. And then, we also include on the expenditure side inflationary assumptions. And then, we've included some, Steve's done a lot of analysis on the unfunded and underfunded infrastructure and equipment needs, which are important components when thinking about long-term financial planning.
So, with that, that's my cue. Let's look at the model and dive in so that you can see how it was built. And as your City Manager Dave had indicated in his opening comments, it's based on data that we received from Aaron and his staff that goes back 10 years. I'm just showing you right now kind of an example of that, of the various revenue data that we ended up getting from Aaron and his staff, as well as the expenditure data that we got. I happen to be showing right now the combination of the move of the Streets Fund to the General Fund. And that's important, I think, to understand in terms of this forecast. What we were asked to do was to provide a financial model and a forecast for your general fund, but as you are likely aware, over the last year or two, the city has made a choice to pull in the Streets Fund that was separately accounted for as a special revenue fund or as an offshoot of the general fund and bring it fully into the general fund. And so, for comparative purposes, we needed to pull that in so that when we look back 10 years or look out 20 years, we need to make sure that all that is in there. So, that is what we have done here. We basically pulled this data into a data worksheet that summarizes all those individual line items that Aaron and his staff have to take care of on the revenue and expenditure side and pull it into meaningful categories that then can be used in the model on both the revenue side as well as on the expenditure side. And we typically focus on expenditure by type because while it may be helpful to understand how much you're spending in parks, recreation, there's a couple of work services, as you are making decisions in terms of service levels, when you are looking at a financial forecast, you really need to do that forecast based on the natural classification. In other words, salaries, benefits, non-personnel operations, the contracted costs that you have for Eastside Fire and Rescue and KCSO for law enforcement. And so, we have focused primarily on the expenditure by type area to be able to manage that. All that data then ultimately comes together into a forecast, which, you know, some of you may be really Excel junkies and love to see how this all interoperates. I'm going to try to pull this back picture, but I just wanted to make sure that you see that it's based on real data and that it's using, you know, great tools, Microsoft Excel, in order to be able to share this data. And our methodology of doing forecasts is to prepare a baseline or forecast that assumes no recession, so basically just looks out in the future. And then, what we do is we layer on top of that recessionary elements here, and I'll show you how that operates as we go through this model so that as we look in the future, as we have just gone through, we have the Great Recession back in 2009 or so, and then we had this incredible pandemic recession, which in some regards wasn't as bad as some people know or were concerned about. You know, but there are going to be recessions in the future, and a good forecast will take that into consideration and make some assumptions as it relates to that. So, ultimately, these forecasts that we build, the no recession and recession forecast, ultimately then come together in the form of a dashboard that helps tell the story. And let me walk you through kind of what you're seeing here in terms of various charts, and I'll show you then how they end up operating. And we'll take a look at some of the key assumption factors that Claire had indicated earlier, our key drivers really for your financial future. So, the graphs that we have here, and pardon me sometimes while I'm looking off because I'm looking at my big monitor on the side here, is we focus on the reserve levels as well as then the annual surplus or fiscal gap or deficit spending that the model might show. On the left, this is the reserve levels, and the items that you're seeing on the red line here identify what your reserve levels have been. We decided to take this graph and just go back to 2017. We could easily change this to go back to 2011, but we wanted to focus on kind of the near term, in terms of some of the growth that was being seen, and we'll unpack some of that in terms of the story that it tells. And then, the future of, you know, the current fiscal year that we're in, 2021, and the 2022, of which you have a, that's the second year of your biennial budget, in terms of what the expenditures and uses of general fund and Streets Funds were in those years. And so, that's what it shows. The blue line is your target or your reserve goal. Your current reserve goal is 10% of annual operating revenues. We are recommending that you consider in your future budgets a change to, number one, base it more on operating expenditures rather than revenues. And the primary school of thought there is a best practice is that it's easy, or it's not so easy to just all of a sudden spin on a dime when revenues all of a sudden take a hit as a result of a pandemic. And so, you need to find out what are the amount of reserves that we want to hold in the piggy bank to be able to address any shortfalls that you have in revenues. And because it's harder to just immediately turn off services, most agencies will use expenditures, operating expenditures, as their basis for identifying what the goal is. The 17% is a minimum reserve threshold or goal that is established by best practice throughout the United States. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends two months, about 17% of annual operating expenditures as a minimum. It depends on, though, what the mix of revenues are. In our experience, what we have seen and what we believe in terms of Samamish, of about, oh, just shy of 70% of your annual general fund and Streets Funds are really, really related to property taxes. That is a fairly stable source, and so therefore, it would suggest that 17% or two months is appropriate to have. But again, that can be easily changed through the use of this tool here. I can either adjust this amount down to 10%, which you see the blue line adjusts downwards, or what we've done is we've assumed 17% of annual operating expenditures. The second graph here goes on with the annual surplus or deficit in each year. And so, this helps kind of tell the story. And when we started looking at the data, we're like, well, wait a minute. What has happened before 2021, and what is happening now since then, and what does that mean in terms of the future? And as Claire had indicated, and as we looked at your data independently, you know, again, the city has been conservative in its approach, and we think that that's great for a variety of different reasons because better promise and over-deliver and that you don't find yourself in a situation where all of a sudden you're not left with the resources to be able to handle the commitments that you have. However, it also means that perhaps there is less of a potential for you to be able to achieve some of the priorities that you were looking for in the past. But what does that mean for the future? What we did is we worked with staff to identify what was in the biennial budget for '21 and '22. And so, the numbers that you're seeing here for '21 and '22 relate to what was actually budgeted in the revision that was done in June for '21. And then, staff will be meeting with you next week to talk about potentially mid-cycle, mid-biennial adjustments for '22. Suffice it to say, and in our conversations with the staff, it appears as though the general fund will be pretty much on target, but a little bit better off in terms of the revenues that were expected, and you're not spending as much as was originally. And you're not spending as much as was originally anticipated. So this 9.6 million is likely going to to shrink a little bit. A big driver in the $9.6 million gap that was budgeted for 21 was a $9 million interfund loan payment to the transportation CIP fund. And so remember that that's one of the factors in here. And then in 22, the budget assumes a $5 million drawdown on the combined reserves of the general fund and streets funds. What we've done, however, though, is in 20, starting in 23, we have taken a fresh look based on what the existing revenue trends are and what we are using as various assumptions, which I'm going to show you here in a moment, for the future. Now, some of the baseline assumptions that are built into the model are property tax, their revenue side of property tax, sales tax, what's expected with respect to developments, services, revenues, et cetera. And we have incorporated them into the model. On this dashboard, we've made the property tax assumptions right upfront in this model. So that way we can make some changes to it. And I'm going to show that to you in a moment here. And right now, this baseline forecast does not assume that the council is exercising the 1% councilmatic authority that you have to increase property taxes, increase the levy each year, nor is it assuming that you're using any of the remaining 1.2 million roughly in in bank capacity. Sorry, 1.5 million in bank capacity that you currently have. Sales taxes right now are assumed to grow at about 3%. That's based on what we've seen historically. We've actually created a feature within this model to be able to get more granular in terms of.
I'm sorry, can can I stop you for just a second? I'm so sorry, council, we need to extend. So Councilmember Trinh, can I have a motion to extend? It's 10 o'clock, so we'd better extend. Till 11:00 probably.
I make a motion that we extend the meeting till 11:00.
A whole second.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just had a quick question if you go back one slide.
Okay, well, just a second. We've got to, we've got to go through our vote first. There's a motion on the floor. Okay, we have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor of extending to 11:00 PM, say aye. Oh, I'm not sure I heard all the council members. Councilmember, did I hear from Councilmember Ross and from Stuart?
Yes.
Councilmember Stuart?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we are, we're all good. Okay, and then your question, Councilmember Trinh.
Hey, on the revenue there, on on this key assumption factors, could you add another source of revenue on to your assumption, like say utility tax?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And and we'll be able to show kind of what what that does in terms of being able to add that feature in here. As you know, you are are not currently exercising utility tax, but we have the ability to be able to model different budget strategies, if you will, which we're going to talk about here in in a moment. So as I was mentioning, you know, we have, we've created within the model, we've been able to get data back to 2017 in terms of the revenues that are that are generated within the city in various sales tax categories. And so we will have the ability to work with you and also for you to make some different growth assumption factors in terms of the various revenue sources that you have on the sales tax side. We're not, now we're using an overall 3% assumption as it comes to sales tax. We have a whole host of other revenue assumptions that when I click on that and it drops down, you see, we not only have sales tax and gas tax, but we can also then incorporate other assumptions in here with respect to like franchise fees. We're all seeing people cutting the cord. And so we're assuming no, really no real growth in in telecom franchise fees in the future. It may grow because they continue to increase the rates. But counteracting that is people are switching over to Apple TV and, you know, and Amazon Video and all those types of sources as well. We have anywhere from a 2% to 4% growth factor in in various other fees and charges on the development services side. There's no expectation in the current baseline forecast for any significant development projects that may come down the line in the future. However, we have incorporated a 4% growth factor that's based on an assumption that your underlying costs associated with providing those services will grow by 4% based on the combination of COLAs and concert cost of living adjustments, healthcare costs and other for the employees that are providing providing those services. So that's kind of a summary of what we have on the revenue assumptions. I see Councilmember Stuart, your hand is up.
Yeah, I was just wondering, can we see more of the history? Because I I'd love to kind of see what the trending has been back more than just four years to understand, like, was there a trend or was it kind of up and down? Because just from what we see, it looks like we just suddenly fall off a cliff. And so.
Right, yeah. And there are a couple of other graphs that we're going to be finalizing for you over the next few days or so to be able to show this to you dynamically. But what we did is we basically did look back at the, you know, sales tax, for example, and and looking at your development fees. And there is a lot of cyclicality over the years and, you know, in terms of development revenues that you that you receive or just even the area of parks recreation fees, you see the significant drop in 2020 when you had to, you know, slow down or or turn off a lot of the those services. So we'll be able to to show that to you.
Okay.
On that trend, that be helpful?
It would be. It would also be helpful to be able to see the full 10 years in the past, right? And and just get a bigger graph so we can see 10 years of history and then see the forward trend. Because I think four years does not a trend make, right?
Well, absolutely, that is right. Yes, yes. And we we did make these assumptions based on a look back to 10 years, not just, you know, the four, the last four years. That said, you know, the last four years give you a little bit better sense of what's happened currently as opposed to, you know, 10 years ago. So anyways, so let me go back up then to, so the, those are the various revenue assumptions that we've incorporated. Clearly, on the expenditure side, the the big drivers are going to be people that provide services, the your staff, as well as then the the two contracted services that you have for fire and police services. And so we brought those up to the front here in terms of, you know, your cost of living adjustments. We've incorporated a placeholder assumption of about 3.25% for for cost of living. That's all subject to, you know, in some cases, the meet and confer process that you have with your externally represented labor group, as well as that other decisions that you make for your non-represented staff. We have incorporated in here an assumption of about a 5% vacancy rate. Claire indicated to you, and we talked with staff, that historically your vacancies have been at about 10 plus percent or so. When you make changes to assume that, you know, in the future, you're going to have that 10% vacancy rate and you not have it, now you're overpromising and underdelivering. And so, but we have incorporated what we think is a reasonable vacancy rate. But I'll show you what the impacts are as we go through that. Other benefits, about 3.25% in mirroring what what's happening with cost of living. But health costs, we have typically seen growing at about a 6%. And that is what we are hearing in terms of of healthcare costs for the future. And so we have incorporated that in here. We've got a 4% placeholder in terms of the contracted services that you have for for fire and police services. Again, that will change shift depending on what those agencies do with their respective employees and the labor group discussions that they have there. But we believe a 4% placeholder right now is is a good estimate in terms of what the future might hold. Right now, we also created an opportunity to be able to put in some placeholder funding for unfunded capital requirements. I had an opportunity to meet with your Public Works Director, the Parks Recreation Facilities Director and the Information Technology Director to understand what the investments are that you have in infrastructure and equipment, et cetera. Right now, we have zero that's in here. The baseline budget does assume about $1 million spend after 2022 per year for road overlay projects, as well as about just north of about a half a million dollars in terms of sidewalk repair. There's some other capital costs in there for for parks. But by and large, as I was meeting with staff, I understand that you are going to be revising a transportation and parks improvement plans in the future. It's going to be vital that you do that. We we believe the best practice is to incorporate that in every budget process that you are revising that and updating that. When we looked at the existing transportation improvement plan, for example, there were significant transportation projects that are out there that don't necessarily have an identified funding source. We think that it's not unrealistic to assume that beyond what's in the baseline budget, that you should probably provision for additional $3 million of placeholder funding in the future. And I'm going to show you what the impacts of that are. And then there are other, the other expenditure assumptions really relate to your non-personnel operations of about 2.25%. So let me come back here and let me show you then how this model works. When we start making assumptions and start building them in, it will dynamically change the details in the back. It's all math, right? Except for the assumptions that are really vital to a forecast usefulness. And then it will, it'll also change the the dashboard. So let's start out with an assumption change here of that if we were to assume that council were to, on an ongoing basis, exercise the 1% levy lift that you have the ability to do councilmanically, and we turn that on. What that does is it adds about $300,000 of additional revenue each year. And so what you see is when I go back between this being off, we have a a long-range fiscal gap that was going to grow to about $8.7 million by the time we hit 2030. But when we turn this back on and we assume that each year for the next eight years, that the council were to make a decision to incorporate the 1% in your long-range forecast, the gap is is shortened. It it ends up going down to about 5.5 million. Well, why do we even have a gap in the first place? And I think most of you realize that when you're looking in the future, long term, and when you see your largest revenue piece of the pie, which is property taxes, can only grow by 1% given your your authority under state law. But your costs are increasing by three to four to sometimes 6% on an annual basis. There's going to be a gap and it's going to widen. And if it were not for either deciding to not do some expenditures or to delay certain things or one-time revenues that might be coming in or, you know, one-time expenditure reductions, there's the the future. And this is true in Washington State. It's true for every other agency within the state that we're working with is that you have this disparity between how fast your largest, typically largest piece of the pie, property taxes can grow versus what your your costs are increasing on an annual basis. So let me pause there. I see Councilmember Stuart, your hand is up again.
Yeah, I I understand what you're saying when you say, you know, we can only grow our revenues by, it would actually not even be 1% because it's only 70% of our revenue. So it would be, you know, point seven, you know, seven tenths of a percent. And our costs are increasing at, you know, 3% or 4%. But hasn't that always been the case? I think that's why it's important to see the historical view and understand why we were able to manage it historically and now suddenly we've fallen off a cliff.
Yeah, it, so has that always been the case? Absolutely, it has. And and I think that that what we were seeing in in the past, based on our review of things, again, you had a lot of, you know, there was conservatism that was built into the budget that that provided for, you know, lower revenues than what were expected and then higher costs than what what were expected. And it was because those revenues were coming in higher and the expenditures were coming in lower that it did that. Now, the question is, will you be able to continue to do that in the future? As I understand from talking with staff, is that especially on the expenditure side, there has been a a reduction, a constriction a little bit in terms of what the costs are that you have budgeted in the future. And so it's not assumed that the large amount of expenditure savings that you've had in the past will be happening in the future. With that being the case, and maybe I'll look to either Dave or to Aaron to chime in any further that you might want to share on those guys.
Yeah, because it's interesting. We cut our capital spending in this biennial a lot, right? By what, 30 million or 35 million? So even like we we chopped out a big chunk of our of our planned spending and we're still falling off a cliff, so.
Right, yep. Okay.
That that.
Can someone explain that?
That amount of money is over several year period. You didn't have that kind of money in your reserves to be able to make a capital expenditure of that amount over a two-year period. So that's a gross overestimate estimate.
That's fine. Can somebody still explain like why we kind of go so drastically from black to red?
I apologize, I missed I missed that.
So I'm just still trying to understand it being graphically. We go from being in the black to being in the red quite suddenly. And I'm just wondering if we can get some more detail on on kind of what's happening there.
So if you're looking at 2021 specifically, that is our budgeted annual. So it's kind of that middle graph. And it's showing the 9 million drop in 2021. That's reflecting the budget numbers. So the budget included that 9 million interfund loan. So we're using operations reserves or fund balance and using that for the 340 capital fund. So recall that transfer that was, what was it?
Right, but is it really a loan? Is it ever going to get paid back?
So that's going to be part of the discussion on the upcoming mid buy that we're going to talk about. Yeah, so.
It's not really a loan.
Right, so as it updates, so it was originally anticipated as a loan with a repayment period. And so then as we progress through time, then you're going to update that number and figure out how much is going to be eligible to be repaid or not based on a certainty of capital revenues.
And as you look at the graph and you see the four years going back to 2017, as was been explained before, you were overestimating. You were deficit budgeting, using reserves for projects that weren't started or weren't completed. So that created a kind of a false surplus at the end of the year. So you're always in the black. So as you look back, you'll see that you're in the black because you were never in the red on actual deficit spending. But it gives a false impression when you're looking back that you were never in the red. And your expenses have grown exponentially. Your staff has gotten bigger, your costs have gotten higher, your contracting costs have gotten larger. It just, your city's growing. And your cost, as has been explained, the 1% on property tax is very, very limited. That's why the legislature has been talking about boosting that councilmatic increase to 2% because you cannot keep up. And now, as was projected before by staff, that you were getting closer and closer to a break even. Now we're there. And we did cut back because we had a lot of expenses that had been factored in for years, such as the contingency of $3 million that you could no longer afford without taking reserves and budget deficit, budget deficit budgeting, which I argued against so that you would get to a more realistic picture. And that's what we're hopeful that this modeling tool helps you see, helps the council see what decisions might need to be made with other tax increases unless you want to look at significant expenditure reductions.
Or or cost efficiencies as well, is the other component of that. I do want to say that in 2023, the forecast indicates that, you know, there's a slight gap there. It's about $800,000. It's about $800,000 and that's fairly nominal in terms of your annual, your annual budget. But it does grow. And so starting in 23, you're pretty close to break even. But in the future, because of that disparity between your largest piece of the pie growing 1% on the revenue side and then the expenditure side potentially growing faster than that, then you start seeing that disparity. Now, when what we're seeing here is we have this 1% that's built into it. The other component could be council making the decision to exercise bank capacity. We feel right now we have a yes or no. I can also, we're also going to add a year in terms of what year would you use that? But right now the bank capacity is about a million and a half dollars. And if that were added here and we'll say yes to this, it gives you a one-time bump, right? In terms of, and then it has an impact in the future years. So your fiscal gap basically shifts up by about one and a half million dollars. So instead of it being over 5.7 million in this out year, you're about 4.3 in the out year. If bank capacity were used 100% in 2022, that's what this baseline assumption is here. So again, if we turn that off and council decides to not use that, you see then what the, what the impact is on, on an ongoing basis. The other component again, as we talked about, was with respect to expenditures. You know, if COLAs were only 3%, what would that do to the forecast? You see that the numbers adjust slightly. So all we're doing is we're changing what the personnel costs are and then anything that is salary-based benefits are also then adjusting at that, that point as well. You know, and again, with respect to contracted costs for fire and police, we change these to 3%. We see that it all of a sudden becomes a much different plan, a little better looking. But you still would have a, an ongoing gap. So if we assume that these assumptions are correct, then what does it mean with respect to budget strategies that would be required? And so what we've done is we've created a couple of simple opportunities here to be able to introduce budget strategies on a gross dollar level amount. But what we will be doing is providing you a tool based on the budget strategies that you end up identifying as part of your fiscal sustainability plan. Should you choose to move forward with that, is that we will be able to give you a much more complex tool to help, you know, do the analysis of if a utility tax were included or if there were assumptions made with respect to cost efficiencies, what impacts would those have on the forecast? And very simply here, I'll just show you that if, you know, based on this current set of assumptions that we have in here, is that the, the gap would ultimately start drawing reserves down such that by 2029, you would be getting close to that 17% level and go below that then in 2030. That was a far cry better than if you assume that there are no increases in the tax levy. And you see what a dramatic impact that has and that you would fall below 17% in 2028 and then potentially fall to zero and below that beyond 2029. Again, based on all of the assumptions that we have in this model. If we just take this and we assume that there were no, you know, revenue adjustments that were made here to property taxes, what would it take to ensure that you address this gap by 2030 and that you make sure that you say reserves stay above your minimum, which we've got here with 17%? And that would be somewhere in the neighborhood of about 7 million. And in fact, you see that 7 million in 2027 phased in over a two-year period isn't quite enough to be able to take care of the gap in 2030. And if this were going up to 8 million, then that would pretty much be able to take care of that issue. And you would see that your reserves would stay above your 17% level. You know, if you did it earlier, if you did it in 25, you'll see that, you know, again, it's taking care of the gap. It's actually creating a surplus in some of those out years and your reserves would actually be growing. And so that's what the, the great thing about a forecast like this is, is that you can model the magnitude of different assumptions and the timing of those in terms of understanding what the, the impacts are so that you can make some informed decisions in terms of what the future would hold. So anyways, I see another hand up, Councilmember Campbell.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. Hey, does this model include the ability to throw in debt? We were looking at maybe 100 to 150 million dollars in debt for capital projects. Can you, can you show us if that can be looked at servicing that debt?
Yes, as we work with staff on that, we have the ability to go ahead and put in some different debt assumptions here. So if you wanted to float 150 million for transportation, you know, services or a new facility of some sort, we could end up modeling that in, in here. Right now, there's very little debt, right? That you, you currently have that's borne by the general fund. But if you chose to do that as a means of being able to handle your, your ongoing forecast, we'll be able to incorporate that as a, as a debt service, which will ultimately then be shown in this area and here that will ultimately flow into the forecast as a debt service cost, which right now we have is zero those out years.
You got it. Thank you, Steve.
Yep. Yep. So what I wanted to also then just show again is if you assume that the 1% is implemented on an ongoing basis in terms of the tax, property tax levy, all of a sudden now your budget strategies are down to about 5 million and that would end up getting rid of the gap. And your reserves would fall a little bit. Again, I'm just plugging in here 2027 as that date by which those, those budget strategies would be implemented. But you basically can see then what, you know, the results of this, this model is, is that it'll help you in terms of the key assumptions that you have and the key drivers that you identify. And we're more than willing to make adjustments to that and include these not only on this front dashboard, but that also in the model itself as, as we, as we move forward. So I wanted to go back to a couple of final thoughts and in conclusion with the fiscal sustainability planning work. If the council decides that it wants to move forward with something like that. But are there any other questions of the, of the model? None? Okay. All right, let me just switch back real quick and let me wrap this, this discussion up here. You know, fiscal sustainability planning, let's see, I don't talk about that, is really this concept of being able to identify various, you know, financial strategy, budget strategies to address any gap that might exist to ultimately ensure that you're able to provide the services that you need to provide to the community without, you know, the threat of defaulting on any of your commitments. And it really is this model that we're showing here on the bottom right here, which is, you know, you, you have a variety of different strategies that you might identify that range from expenditure controls and cost shifts, that's just being more efficient with the, you know, cost efficient, cost effective with your service delivery, looking at service delivery alternatives as a mean to be able to provide the same level of service at a lower cost. And revenue enhancements are three areas that try to maintain service levels. And to the extent that you're not able to, that they're not sufficient or able to be implemented in time to be able to address any gap that might exist, then you might have to look at service level reductions. And Councilmember Dell, did you want to ask your question before I finalize this presentation?
Thank you very much, Steve. Two things. First of all, this past year, we've had a ma, well, for us, a major infusion from the federal government as part of the COVID-19 relief effort. It's in the general category of government transfer payments. So in looking at the history, I think you'd have to probably take that out to get back to a normal situation because we don't get that every year. The second thing is with regard to the sales tax, you were increasing it 3% per year. What is that based on? Is that based on our history? Is it based on population growth? What is it?
The, the 3%?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's based on, it's based on historical trends as well as the assumed population growth for, for the future. You know, based on our conversations with staff about the, the mix of retailers that you have in, in the community and what the potential future might hold, we assume that a 3% on growth seems to make some sense. Now, the question becomes if you start seeing more growth, either from new development or, or other, you know, densification in terms of properties that would increase your growth, population growth, or if new retailers were to come on board as a result of some of the, of that, the model has the ability to go ahead and add those as different layers onto it that will inform sales tax, it'll inform property tax, it'll inform a variety of other, you know, different revenue assumptions there.
Well, got it. So we can play around with different revenue assumptions and watch the lines change. The term new normal is overused these days. But we are facing a new normal here in that our online sales revenue has gone up because we're pulling delivery now as opposed to point of sale. And now also the sales tax revenue from construction has been depressed lately because of the moratorium we've had in place for the last several months, actually several years now. One of these days that may change, in which case the revenue would come back up again. But I would expect that with people working from home now rather than committing in offices, there could be a greater impact on the sales tax revenue here as opposed to the way it's been. So we need to be aware of possible changes in the curves for each of these individual items as we go forward with this, just a note of caution from someone who's dealt with modeling issues in the past.
Yeah, excellent point. And I've just got to say, thank goodness for the Wayfair decision that allowed, you know, cities to maximize the, the opportunities of, of online sales from those large retailers that shall remain nameless that generate all that significant sales tax. And that was, you know, again, as you likely know, it was a big reason why you didn't, and, and most cities in King County didn't experience as much pain as might have otherwise been felt as a result of the pandemic when people stopped going to stores. They were buying online from the big ones. And that really helped, you know, pull up the, you know, cities from their bootstraps when it comes to, to sales tax revenue. So that was very helpful, you know?
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I jotted down a question. You had mentioned when you were going through your, your first slides that we had a 38% population growth, which included the Kohani annexation. But in that, in that you also said that our population growth was outpacing our revenue growth. Two questions in there. One is how much of that population growth was the annexation? And what makes you say that the revenue growth from those additional homes, you know, and the property taxes and the sales taxes that we collect from those people isn't keeping pace?
Yeah, good questions. That was this slide, I believe, right? Where we're talking about the, the population growth. I'll have to look to staff to, to be able to address the question about the population growth related to the annex, the annexation. But the, the demands for services that resulted from, from that population growth, you know, when, when we look at, and this is another example of graphs that would be able to help in terms of telling that story back in 2011 in terms of what was your per capita revenues that were brought in at that time versus what is it today? When we were looking at that, it appeared as though per capita revenue growth was, was, or per capita revenues was low, is lower today than it was back then. And then your, your costs, of course, have increased as well. But, you know, Dave and Aaron, do you have anything further to add on that? You might know the answer on the annexation piece too.
I can't speak to that, but Chris might have some information for us.
The annexation added about 10,000 people. I'm not sure what percent that is. Maybe half of the annexation growth or half of the growth has been from the annexation. That was in 2016.
Chris, at the time we annexed Kohani, we got 12,000 more people. That's straight out of the annexation documents. At that time, we were at 45, so do your math.
We'll go back and do some more looking at that and provide you an update by next week so that we can give you a more accurate picture.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing those graphs to see, because we haven't, you know, I'd like to just see how the, the demands on services have outpaced that because I don't think we've grown our services, you know, 38%. So it'll be curious to see how that's been trending.
Let me wrap up the conversation with fiscal sustainability planning. Basically, you know, a model that, that we find is a best practice is that agencies will, you know, kind of take, you know, some of this may seem like common sense, but it's really identifying what are those different strategies? And what is their fiscal impact versus how difficult is it to implement? And of course, something that has minimal difficulty, that has, you know, significant fiscal impact, you know, has a high probability for success, whereas something that's really small in terms of fiscal impact, but is so difficult to get over to the, the finish line. It's like, why do we even do that? So, you know, typically agencies will really focus on more of those, those high level fiscal impact strategies that, that I know. Let me just quickly finish this up. Budget strategy opportunities really come in those four different buckets that I mentioned. I've provided in your, in the presentation and your packet that you received prior to this meeting, you know, these different samples of, of different strategies that other agencies are using. Some, you know, might be very applicable to, to some amish. Others might not. You know, admissions tax is something that, that is a viable opportunity for some agencies that have golf courses or other things or theaters. You don't have that necessarily right now. But utility users tax is something that is a potential as well as a BNO tax. You know, expenditure controls and cost shifts, always looking for ways to being able to be more cost effective or to shift costs perhaps to others that, that should be bearing or might be bearing those, those costs. Service delivery alternatives is another area that, including insourcing or outsourcing various services or collaborations for providing those services. And then ultimately, if, if the, those three areas that try to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible are not successful, then you might have to look at service level reductions. And again, there's on your screen is various samples from other agencies and what they've done. But it's more just to kind of give you ideas in terms of if there is a fiscal gap long term or if you have those underfunded or unfunded obligations that you need to address and there's not sufficient capacity to be able to deal with that fiscally, then the question is how will you be able to, to adjust that? And ultimately, you know, what are those strategies compared with what your, what your goals are? So next steps and then I'll conclude. And then I see Councilmember Campbell, your hand is up. You know, it really is, it's the concept of, you know, what are the impacts of the various assumptions that we've talked about? You know, we, we believe that you should take a look at your review and of your minimum reserve policies and perhaps move towards an expenditure-based reserve policy for number one. And then number two is we believe that two months of annual operating expenditures is the best practice that is very appropriate for, for some amish and is prudent in terms. the best practice that is very appropriate for Samamish and is prudent in terms of being able to deal with any future recessions. You know, ultimately then understanding what this, you know, the future holds and is there a gap and to what extent is, you know, that gap there? We believe that there is a long-term fiscal gap that exists and council's going to have to make some decisions, some of which might be easier than others, to be able to address that on an ongoing basis. And then I know next week that you're planning on potentially, you're hearing from staff just proposals to update your mid-biannual adjustments. As Claire mentioned earlier, we're happy to make adjustments to this model based on your input tonight as well as the updates that you will be getting from staff in terms of what they're projecting, 2021 to finalize. And so we're willing to help with that. And then finally is, you know, to the extent that there is a long-term gap and those filling those unfunded needs are going to be important, it's going to be important to identify and address some type of fiscal sustainability plan to ensure you're able to continue to provide the services that the community is expecting from you. So Councilmember Campbell, and sorry about that, I wanted to finish that up.
Yeah, yeah, not at all. Hey, on the revenue side, I think it's fairly easy to model the gains per, let's say, household or person, however you're looking at it, going to bring a certain amount more in per property tax, certain amount more in per sales tax, et cetera, et cetera. Does the, you have the ability to model on the expense side of those additional families? For each household that moves in, they're adding more load on the roads. So if you get an extra thousand people in, you're going to have to do a specific road improvement. They're going to wear the roads out faster. They're going to need more staff. They're going to need more parks. They're going to need more ball fields. They're going to need more schools, although that may not be in this model. But how do you pick up the load and those costs? Because I know when you're looking at revenue, we're looking at some of this is impact fees from developers, but I know that's a small portion of the actual net cost that those new residents add in any number of different directions. Do you pick that up in this model?
We can add that as a part of that. And that's what I was alluding to a little earlier with respect to any development projects that might be coming online. You know, there's a, there's a whole body of study on doing those, you know, economic analysis in terms of new development. But with respect to this model, we can easily create a tab for you that will allow you to model different projects in terms of what the property tax, sales tax, other different types of revenue sources will be, and then comparing that then to the expenditure side. And the easiest way to do that on the expenditure side is doing as a kind of a per capita cost based on your existing costs. You can get much more granular in terms of, well, does it mean a new fire station needs to be built? And if that's the case, what is our cost going to be with respect to Eastside FNR? And so, you know, it can be as complex as you want to make it. We're happy to make sure that you have that ability in there so that way you can easily model that. We've actually talked with staff a little bit about that as you move forward and if there's an opportunity to be able to see new development coming onboard.
Yeah, I'd be interested also in your experience from your firm in how you've modeled that in the past to accurately capture, because those are kind of interesting costs to capture because they don't add up directly in front of you and all of a sudden you need a new road and you're like, well, the new road's $100 million. So how is that captured over the long term of the budget to account for that? So you don't get 10 years like we are. We're 20 years down the line and we're $200 million behind in fixing our roads and creating new roads. How do you capture that accurately so that we're realize that that is something that we're going into the hole for, but you really can't see it because it comes in so slowly?
Yeah, and it really involves looking at comprehensive plan. It looks, you know, looking at the transportation improvement plans that you have as well as an updated payment management study so that you know where you are today. And then what are additional road trips and what impacts will those have in terms of the need to spend, right? On a, let's say, an average 10-year basis to make sure that you can deal with that extra load that's out there, assuming people don't continue to zoom like this all the time for work, right?
You got it. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, I don't see any other questions.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're going to use the model and next week just a bit as we present our preliminary recommendations on the mid-bi budget adjustments for council to begin to think and perhaps provide us some more feedback and more direction. So you can think about things this week. If you've got a particular question or two, you can send an email to me and we will talk with Steve and Claire about what those might do to the model and make some of the assumptions. And hopefully, it's going to give you a tool that you can use to help guide you through the budget process. That's what your direction was and that's what we hope to provide you. And then as we go through that process, maybe it'll indicate that we need to take the next step in doing the more fully sustained budgetary modeling and look at that expense. So thank you, Management Partners. Anything more to add, Aaron, Chris? Again, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Claire. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Great presentation. Lots of work, you guys. Great, great job. Thank you. Okay, it is, it is 10 to 11. So council, before we move on and have to disrupt our next presentation, we might as well talk about extending.
Yeah, I'd encourage the council to maybe take a Samamish five and extend so that we can get through some of these other very, very important agenda items. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Aaron, do you have any idea how much time we need for the rest of this?
Dave, do you have? Can you give me a?
I got a suggestion. We move, we extend to 11:30 right now.
Okay, okay. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to extend to 11:30. Any discussion?
I don't think that's nearly enough time if we're going to do the whole agenda, but...
We have a motion on the floor to extend to 11:30 and then we also know we have people that turn into pumpkins. So right now, we're going to 11, have a motion on the floor to 11:30. Discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're doing a five so I can...
Yeah, but let's not do a Samamish five. Let's do an actual five and be back.
Yeah, five minutes.
Okay.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay, Samamish, are we ready to go? Okay, our next topic up tonight is the, it's the discussion regarding the Growth Management Planning Council, the GMPC, countywide planning policies. And this is David Pyle.
Good evening, Mayor.
There he is. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen to get started. Great. So tonight, for your consideration, we have a draft letter to the King County Council regarding amendment of the countywide, regarding possible future amendment of countywide planning policies. Amendment number 21 is an amendment made by GMPC to the motion to adopt draft CPPs that was made by the Growth Management Planning Council. Does not amend any of the policies themselves, rather it amends the adopting motion. So what happens is that the King County Council, or excuse me, the Growth Management Planning Council goes through the process of amending CPPs and then adopts motion or takes action and passes motion to adopt the CPPs. As part of that motion, within the language of the motion, there is an amendment that was included that identifies that the Growth Management Planning Council is requesting the Growth Management Planning Council Affordable Housing Committee to revisit some of the countywide planning policies once information is made available by the state in 2022. What this amendment does is it obligates the GMPC and the GMPC Affordable Housing Committee to revisit the CPPs once the GMPC Affordable Housing Committee has had a chance to review and consider state-published data on existing and projected housing needs under House Bill 1220. This could result in adoption of changes to CPPs sometime in 2023. The concern is that reopening the CPPs late in 2022 and adoption of revisions to CPPs in 2023 could result in a disruption of the city's periodic comprehensive plan update process that is scheduled to begin in 2022. This is because changes to CPPs could result in the city needing to redo portions of the background process that are the foundation of the periodic comprehensive plan update that is due in June of 2024 and requires consistency with King County countywide planning policies. This could result in additional expense and time necessary to complete the comprehensive plan update process. The concern that staff have here is that we begin scoping of our comprehensive plan in 2022. Scoping includes a gap analysis where we look at our current policies and our current comprehensive plan and we compare and contrast that to countywide planning policies that are in place. One of the requirements of a comprehensive plan periodic review and update is that we ensure that our comprehensive plan is consistent with countywide planning policies. So the issue here is that we might set down the path of what we believe to be the work plan to update the comp plan, only to then find that the countywide planning policies are changed in 2023, which would then result in us having to backpedal and find the point in the process to, again, re-engage in developing background information. So for us, it just seems a little out of sequence and we're just wanting to raise this to make sure the council's aware of it. Now that we are aware of it, there are ways to address it and we can work with it. However, we do have some concern that we don't know what's coming our way and we can't then be in complete control of our comp plan process and it might take a little longer, cost a little more than what we anticipate on the onset. The question for the council is, does the city council wish to direct staff to prepare and send a letter to the King County Council raising concern regarding how reopening the countywide planning policies in late '22 and adoption of revisions to CPPs in 2023 could result in disruption of the city's periodic comprehensive plan update process? If the council would like to send the letter, is the letter provided in Exhibit 1 acceptable? And what edits does the council request? If no, is the council interested in staff communicating this concern back to King County Council at the staff level through alternative channels? Turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, hold on because my computer just died, which might mean it's time to go home, but hold on. Okay, I'm going to let you call on who's got their first hand up while I try to retrieve what my computer's doing.
So I do see Deputy Mayor Malchow has her hand up. I believe you're muted.
Thank you. I was saying, thanks, David. I think the letter is really well drafted. I don't know that we want to tinker with it much. I think we need to stay focused on the process part of this and that's what will, you know, potentially upend several elements of the comprehensive plan if something were to alter. So I'm supportive of the letter as drafted.
Thank you. I believe Councilmember Treen had his hand up next.
Yeah, I concur with the deputy mayor. What I would, and I can't remember what version I read first, but I had, there were a couple typos or an added article, you know, like a "the" or "a." So just, I would just go back and just, you know, edit it one more time, look through it and send it as drafted.
Got it. Thank you. I will definitely look for syntax errors if that's ultimately what we do. Councilmember Odell.
Thanks, David. I agree with what's been said so far by the two previous speakers. I would also encourage us to do whatever back-channel communication we can with staff on their concerns so they fully appreciate it, in addition to making the frontal attack through the council directly.
Got it. We do have partner contacts within King County and we would be happy to reach out to them as well and raise the concern. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, David, you talk about changes coming in 2023 and I know you had laid out a timeline in an email, but I'm not sure that it's going to come that late, right? I mean, the work has already commenced. The Affordable Housing Committee just needed time because there was a brand-new law that was just enacted at the time that the CPPs were up for approval. And that's really the intention here is there's that the county has to be, the county and the cities have to be in compliance with the new state law. So while I appreciate the concerns, I'm not sure what it is exactly we're expecting the county and even us as a city to do if we don't understand the implications of the new law passed this year.
So I'll draw your attention to Exhibit 3. Within Exhibit 3 is the language that was adopted with the adopting motion. And within that motion, it includes language that states that the Affordable Housing Committee shall begin its work in the beginning of 2022.
No later than, yeah.
No later than.
No later than.
And it shall wrap up its work by the end of 2022.
I don't see where it says it will end. It says it will be by the end, so it's not necessarily the end, but at the latest. So has the work in the Affordable Housing Committee already started?
Not that I'm aware of because the data that they're depending their work on has not yet been released.
Okay. Has there been any discussion of extending the timeframe for the comp plan updates?
So it's already been extended once. It originally was due in 2023, but due to various factors, COVID being one of them, the legislature extended the date to 2024.
But is there any discussion of a further extension?
I'm not aware of any. I haven't heard of any at this point.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate the challenges that this creates. I just, I just don't see any way around it. As Councilmember Treen said in his email earlier today, affordable housing is complicated. And, you know, this Affordable Housing Committee, if anybody has ever watched it, this committee's doing exceptional work and we really, as a region, need these solutions to come through. For those who aren't aware, right, we're about 244,000 affordable housing units short in King County right now. And so a lot of work has to be done. And again, just to clarify for the public, when we say affordable housing, we're not just talking about low-income housing. We're talking about affordable housing at all levels. So even people making, you know, somewhere near six figures, we don't have enough affordable housing units at all income levels. So I just think we have to try to, you know, find ways to work with the Affordable Housing Committee from the GMPC and figure out ways to really be collaborative as opposed to just saying, you know, this makes it difficult. We're not the only city where this will be difficult. It'll be difficult on the county as well, but there is a new law. We have affordable housing crisis in King County and I would like to see us take a more collaborative stance.
Councilmember Stewart, is there a question? Councilmember Stewart, is there a question in there? Because I don't believe there's anybody on the council who's trying to say that it's, we know it's difficult, but I don't think there's anybody who's trying to say that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, you didn't interrupt anybody else who made statements and didn't ask questions.
Well, because there's nobody else who's saying that, trying to put the words in council's mouth.
I don't believe that you're allowed to just interrupt and say that to me. I'm allowed to have the floor.
Well, you're not allowed to have it as a pulpit, so do you have a question?
So is it only questions because Deputy Mayor and Councilmember Odell made statements and didn't just ask questions?
Does it pertain to, or are you going to go off on a diatribe? So which is it?
Wow, okay. I see how it is, Mayor. So everybody gets to speak except for me. So maybe your statement at the end of the last meeting wasn't true, that people can express their views and the First Amendment still stands. You don't actually practice what you preach, do you?
You can actually do that, but I'm trying to, Councilmember?
Point of order, please. This is not, this is a meeting to determine whether we're going to approve the staff sending a letter to King County. So if we could please stay on that subject matter.
I was on that subject until I was interrupted.
I would have. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Trine.
I think we shouldn't send the letter. I think we should work with staff and take a more collaborative approach. And I am well within my bounds as a council member to make such a statement and not if not a diatribe.
You are well within your right to say that you do not want the letter to go. Thank you. Councilmember Ross.
This doesn't abandon the importance of affordable housing. It just speaks to the process. I think the letter's well-written, and I support it.
Deputy Mayor.
I think Councilmember Ross just took the words right out of my mouth. Councilmember Stewart, again, no one is deliberating or debating the need for affordable housing, but this letter speaks to process, and the process needs to be highlighted to GMPC and the King County Council so that they are aware, should something change, that it will disrupt not just Sammamish, but potentially every municipality's comprehensive plan updates based on the timeline that David set forward at the onset of the meeting. So I think that's why it is important to send the letter so that they are aware of this as they go through this deliberation. Thanks.
Yes, that, that's, you're much better about trying to state that than I am, but of course, it's quarter after 11:00. So Councilmember Gamblin.
You're probably on mute, Ken.
Yep, you're right, Ken, thank you. Yeah, I support sending in the letter. I think it's important that we have this said. I don't need to be reminded again and again and again how important affordable housing is. We all know that, so I support sending the letter. Thank you.
Okay, and then before we start around two, I do support sending the letter, and I, I just, you know, I do think it's important that we have the, have them know that this is going to affect other cities, not just us. We are not, of course, the only city that is going to have problems doing this. Every city is going to have problems trying with their comp plan, and every city is going to run into a problem with this, so it doesn't just affect us. And affordable housing is a regional problem, and so we're going to have to work on this all together. Okay, so now going into round two, Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, given that the Affordable Housing Committee wants this additional time to assess the impacts from House Bill 1220, which was passed by the legislature in 2021, if we want to send a letter to someone and talk about the process, a more productive thing might be to send a letter to the state legislature asking for an extension, because we're going to have to comply with the law. And if the Affordable Housing Committee doesn't go through and do this analysis, we're still, you know, somebody's going to have to. And so I think the work has to be done, and the Affordable Housing Committee is, you know, going to work on it as quickly as possible as soon as the data is available. So we can either try to go it alone and not wait for them, or we can, again, work with them, and maybe we send a letter to the state legislature saying, we're going to need more time to do comp plan updates because we need to understand the impacts from this law. And I think that would be a far more productive way of addressing this, not just in Sammamish, but for all the cities, and still being able to account for, you know, what we, as a region, need to do for affordable housing.
Okay, that's a good point. Councilmember Odell.
I call a question.
Okay, we've got a call of the question. Does anybody want to second that?
There's no motion.
That's correct. There is no motion.
There's no motion.
Okay, I will make a motion then. I move that we send a draft letter as it exists, given any type of graphical corrections that are necessary.
Second.
Okay. And now you want to call the question?
Well, I have, I have, why I had a question, Mayor, you said that we would be discussing the housing targets when we got to this topic, so can we get the update on that now?
Okay, so that would be a question. Let's do this, and then we can come back and ask that question, I guess. So Dave, stay on the line, because Pam's got a question for you. Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. Do I have a second to the motion on the floor?
Yes, I seconded it.
Oh, okay, didn't hear you. I apologize. So Deputy Mayor seconded the motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes six to one. And now I believe we have a question from Councilmember Stewart for David Pyle.
Yeah, so David, when the analysis was done in terms of our capacity to build, one of the primary factors was that there was no sewer capacity on the North End, and that restricted a lot of available lands to not be considered buildable at the time. But now those restrictions are much less. We know that, starting next month, we'll have another 700, and then early next year, we'll have another almost 1,400. So will we be revisiting our capacity at this point in time? Since, again, our growth target request was based on the fact that we had no sewer capacity in the North End.
So this is an emerging situation for staff as well. I don't have an answer to your question. I'd be happy to do some research on it and get back to you. We are in the process of looking over past reports that were sent to King County regarding the urban growth capacity study and what was included with that regarding the reporting out by the Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District on the infrastructure gap that they identified in the survey that they filled out, and now looking at what, the new information that is made available. The Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District did provide us an update to that survey, and there is a new version of that available. However, it does take us time to get to that, given that we had largely closed out that project, and we do have a very full work plan. We don't have staff time available to immediately dive into that, so it is something that we will be looking at in the upcoming weeks. And when we have reached the point where we are ready to send information back to King County to follow up on that, we will be updating the council on that.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, if you can just let us know when you have, you know, a firmer timeframe, that would be, that would be excellent, because I think, you know, I think that's information that King County needs to know.
We are definitely coordinating and communicating with King County on this issue. It's one that's not, you know, simple to navigate, and we will definitely update the council when we know more. It's a great question. It's one that's shared by the staff.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have any other questions for David Pyle? All right, good night, Mr. Pyle. Okay, the next, the next one up is discussion on project prioritization, effort for state funding consideration, and this one is Jeff. That's Jeff, Doug, and Audrey. And there's see Doug.
Hi, Mayor, I just connected. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Great. In the interest of time, I'll turn this over to Doug McIntyre, who'll be giving a brief presentation on how we came up with recommended transportation project priority list. Doug?
Hey, Jeff, can everyone hear me all right? Okay, and can everyone see my screen?
No.
Okay.
Oh, here it's coming.
Okay.
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Moran and members of the council. My name is Doug McIntyre, Transportation Planning Manager and Public Works. Tonight, we're here to talk to you about the project prioritization effort for state funding consideration. We're going to cover a couple topics here of substance and then open it up for discussion and hopefully get direction from our council tonight. First, we're going to start with what state funding request was and issues related to it. Then we're going to go into a discussion on the criteria scoring system that we propose to apply for this request, and then the project list that comes out of that. We'll end it with a map on the project locations and then open it up for discussion. So more specifically, tonight, we are hoping to get city council input on the project priorities list before we share anything with Senator Mullet's office. So the request came from State Senator Mark Mullet's office in conversation with city leadership. It's my understanding that Senator Mullet asked the city for a list of transportation project, high priority projects for consideration in future state funding. Although he did not identify any funds or any grant programs, he was trying to get input from the city on what high priority transportation projects the city would like to get funded for. Again, we don't know too many details around this, but our collective brain trust in the Public Works Department, we think that the anticipated funding might be in the range of three to five million dollars, but again, that is certainly open to changes. The map on the screen here in the pink shaded polygon is the district that Mark Mullet represents. As you can see, it's a big chunk of eastern King County, but it does cover Mahoney, which is this little triangle, if you can see my screen right, or my pointer right now. This is a relatively urgent request, so timely provision of our prioritized projects list to Senator Mullet's office is really important. It gets the process going, gets the conversations going, allows us to send letters of support sooner than later. Even though it is undefined, we think that earlier input is critical to any future success we may have. However, there is an issue, an obstacle in front of us. We currently do not have an adopted prioritized projects list, so it makes it a little bit difficult for us to be nimble and respond to these types of requests. So this really leads into what we want to talk about tonight, which is the proposed path forward. So we discussed as a team with city leadership what we might want to consider sharing with Senator Mullet's office, and it really starts with trying to use what we already have. So the proposal that we want to talk about tonight is revisiting and expanding upon the previous TMP effort, which, just to highlight, was never adopted. It's not an official city document, but it did have merit for its criteria scoring system. As you might recall, the TMP had a relatively extensive effort done on to prioritize projects in the city. We looked at over 100 projects, potential projects that we could consider and developed a scoring system to prioritize them based on type of project. So we want to revisit that and then expand upon that. So what I mean when I say expand upon that effort is we would take elements of a subset of projects and apply a secondary criteria scoring system to it to get a really concise and implementable list for the council to consider sharing with Senator Mullet. We want to make sure that it is a list of projects that the city council believes can be funded and built. So with that, I'll go into the details on the scoring system in the TMP. Again, this was developed previously between 2017 and 2019. So I'll go high-level on this. The criteria scoring system in the TMP was based on community conversations that were developed over the course of a couple years in the early stages of the TMP. And what happened was we went out, a team and a consulting team, to talk to the city in various formats and heard what the city, or what the community members were saying about what they wanted to see in their transportation system. So out of that, we took elements of those, of that input and created a scoring system on that. That scoring system was presented to council a couple times between 2017 and 2019 with official kind of head nod direction to use that in 2019. So the seven criteria that are part of that scoring system start with that the community wanted the transportation system to be efficient. That is, you know, projects like removing choke points on roads scored high in that scoring system. They also wanted regional connectivity, so projects typically on arterials and connecting to 202 and I-9, et cetera. Those projects scored higher on the connectivity criteria. The community also wanted the system to be more connected, and that included multimodal connections. And this one is really about filling gaps. A lot of the projects that scored high on this criteria were gap projects. Also importantly was fiscal responsibility. So projects that scored high for fiscal responsibility were projects that were more likely to be funded by grants and projects that also the city had more control over. And then the fifth criteria here is a safe, providing a safe and welcoming environment for the whole system. And again, this is a really important one, and the projects that scored high on this one were generally addressing locations in the city that had high incidences of collisions and other injury-type accidents. The sixth criteria was for community character, and this one, this was really important to Sammamish residents in the sense that they wanted any projects to contribute to the neighborhood character that we have. So projects that scored high on this were products like sidewalks and bike lanes, that kind of thing. And then the seventh and final criteria is that we wanted to reflect all the community input we got over the course of those years. In the parentheses next to each criteria, you'll see that we provided weights to each criteria. So those were, there's a couple reasons for that. One is that we wanted to have a scoring system that had a really clear breakdown of tiers of projects. So we wanted it to be spread out so that it was really clear what was the high priority projects and which ones were the lower priority projects. If we didn't, or when we didn't apply the weight, it was really clustered, and it was really hard to tell what projects scored higher and made it to a better or higher tier. So criteria one, two, and five had a two X weight, so we provided raw scores of 30, 20, and zero to each project for their ability to meet each of these criteria and then apply a weight to it. That really helped us build a prioritized project list at that time. And I mentioned earlier that we had a universe of projects in the TMP. It was very large, it was over 100 projects, it was, you know, around 125 or so. And when we looked at it for this effort, we wanted to make sure we had a much more concise list and also reflect what's currently going on in the city. So this list here is a subset of the subset of the TMP list. So we met and talked about what are the high-concern areas in the city, what are areas that we wanted to, you know, currently send for funding consideration to the state. So a lot of these are arterial projects. I know that it might be a little bit hard to see on this slide, but it's but it is included in the packet for easier view. But I'll just go down the list. So we have, one project is Isqal Pine Lake Road from Mahoney Boulevard to 32nd. Second project on the list here is Isqal Pine Lake Road from 48th to Mahoney Boulevard. Third project is Isqal Falls City Road from Mahoney to Isqal Beaver Lake Road. We have Sahali from Northeast 12th all the way to the north city limits. Isqal Pine Lake Road from Isqal Falls City Road to Southeast 43rd. 228th from Isqal Pine Lake Road South through the city limits at Southeast 43rd. The Lewis Thompson Road Project and Sahali Way outside of the city limits. So 202 to the limits of the city limits. You'll see on this table that we have cost estimates, just a really important note that these are from the TNP page, so they were done in Q1 of 2020. So they are outdated, but I think it is still important to include them so that you get a sense of just rough magnitude of costs as well as comparison between this list. I think the comparison is probably more accurate at this point. And as you can see in the final column on the right, that there's a composite score. So this was each project scored on the criteria scoring system that I just described. And then from added, the weight being added to that and then tallying. So as you can see, some of the more important projects are listed at the top and the less higher prioritized projects listed at the bottom. So looking at this list, obviously, this is an incredibly high cost list, and these products are very large in scope. So when we met to talk about this funding effort, we wanted to pull out elements of each of these corridor projects that were more bite-sized and easier for the city to implement and therefore more likely to be funded by grant funding. So what we did was we applied a secondary criteria to a smaller subset of elements of these projects. Hopefully that makes sense. So the second criteria scoring system that we applied was, we looked at five criteria. One being just congestion where the choke points, is the project addressing the choke point. Two, life safety. Three, partnerships and anticipated support from other agencies. Four, proximity of the schools and school traffic. As we know in Samamish, that's a very important thing, sort of a unique problem.
Doug?
And then the final criteria is frequency of the issue. Yes, Mayor?
Doug, I'm sorry. It's 11:30. Council, it's 11:30. So I need to...
Extend to 11:55.
11:55, okay. We have a motion to extend to 11:55.
I'll second.
Wow, you must have a late start tomorrow.
I have an early start tomorrow and a new student, too, so I'm just excited beyond belief.
Okay, so we'll have a 6:30 meeting, so I'm going to be a no. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any discussion? Outside of the whining that I'm going to tell you I have a 6:30 meeting. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay.
Aye.
Roll call.
Who was...
Five, two.
Yeah. Okay, and we continue to 11:55, and I'm sorry for interrupting, Doug. Please continue.
No problem. Thank you. I'll go as quickly as I can. The final criteria, excuse me. The final criteria in the secondary scoring system is frequency of the issue. So some of these projects are daily occurrences and some are less frequent, maybe monthly or even seasonal. So this led us to this more concise project list. As you can see, there's a column called reduce scope, the third from the left. And that is the elements that we took from the previous project list to be more implementable and more likely to be appealable to funders. So this list, as you can see in the black columns, columns four through nine, that's where we scored. This was a binary scoring system. If it addressed the issue, it got a 1. If it did not, it got a 0. And as you can see, we took out, in the first case, we took from the Isqal Pine Lake Road project, just the intersection at Isqal Pine Lake Road and Southeast 32nd, right by Sun Hill Elementary. That is a problem area that we all know about. From the 228th Avenue project, we took out the, and this is the south of Pine Lake project. We took out the intersection at 228th and Southeast 40th. For the Isqal Falls City Road improvement, we took out the flood-prone segment, which is right by Endeavor Elementary. It's not an intersection, but it is a low-lying area that floods occasionally. And then from the Sahali Way project, we took out the intersection of Sahali Way and 208th. So when you apply the secondary scoring to those elements of the corridor projects, you can kind of see a little breakout here where you get the roundabout at 32nd and the intersection at 228th and 40th, kind of being a little bit higher above the other two projects. This, so we're showing these on the map here. The corridors themselves are in the blue lines, and the intersections are in the orange dots. And then the flood-prone segment on Isqal Falls City Road is the red box. So that is generally what we have done for council's consideration. Again, the council can choose to amend this, provide different direction. We can go a variety of different ways here, but we do want city council input if we do anything. This is really kind of a basis for the conversation. So with that, I will leave questions.
Okay, we have some questions, so we're going to start with Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Doug, the first list, who got to vote on that?
Doug, do you have an answer to that question?
I'm sorry. I might have missed it. Can you repeat that, please? Sorry. I thought you...
The first list, the step one list?
Yes. Can you see that on the screen?
Yeah. Who got to vote on that?
I'm sorry. I'm having a really hard time, Councilmember Odell. Can you repeat that one more time? I apologize.
Who got to vote on that list?
Oh, yes. Okay, so this was a subset of the TNP list from 2020. So it was never adopted. It was not voted on. This list that you see in front of you is a subset that we internally had conversations on. This, we felt like represented current transportation needs and addressed problematic areas in our system.
Okay, on the second list, you withdrew certain pieces of it?
That's correct, yes.
Who made those decisions?
So that was the same...
Go ahead, Doug.
Say again?
That was the same group internally. We had conversations about the list in step one and felt that it was very high cost. It was very large scopes and that those projects themselves would not be very appealable to funders. And so we wanted to take out implementable elements of each of those or some of those corridor projects that we felt might be candidates for the state funding consideration.
Well, on TR-05, the thing that was removed is probably one of the more important.
Can you repeat that, please? I'm really sorry.
On TR-05, the item that was removed was one of the more important things of that project.
Yes, the intersection at 28th and Sahali Way, yes. That's why we took it out.
So do we need to have one project or are we doing a list?
That would be up to the council. We prefer to have a primary project, but more than one is okay. If you look at what we've done in the past with the legislative priority list, which we'll be talking about later tonight, you can have multiple projects on the list.
Okay.
Did you have any more questions, Councilmember?
Not at the moment.
Okay, Councilmember Train?
Doug or Jeff, why wasn't, is it TR-27? I'm kind of going off my memory here. The Issaquah... No, no. Can you go to the map which shows all the corridors? Yeah, TR-27, isn't that not even our roadway that's owned by the city of Issaquah?
That one would be done with coordination with the city of Issaquah. It is partly outside the city.
Yeah, so was there a reason why that, so I guess was that include, okay, so that, to me, that takes number one priority if that would, if I was king for a day. TR-20, I'm not. TR-27 would be number one on my priority list because that is clearly a choke point. My second one with the idea that the high school and elementary school are going to be going in, that TR-28, which is 228th and 40th, Southeast 40th, that would be my number two. And probably I would follow that up with saying that if the school district is going to work that problem, then my number two is TR-04, that intersection there. So that's the best I can do for right now. And obviously, I think all of, all the TR-8 or TR-08 with the flooding, that's a safety issue, so maybe that should move up on my priority list, but... You've picked really good ones, Doug, as far as like, these are projects we can do and they all have the reasons why and they're all good for me. But I would like to, I think, if I've looked at it, at transportation only, TR-27 is the choke point. Safety, that's the TR-08. And then also a choke point is that light at the Sahali. So maybe you go 1, 2, 3 like that. Or can I skip the inside stuff? Shoot, which, and that's only because I'm thinking that maybe we can get the school district to help us out on that roadway. And the roundabout, too. I mean, come on, that should have been done correctly the first time, so... I know, not your fault. All right, later. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I'm laughing because I'm thinking the same thing he was, is geez, you picked really good ones to pick from. Okay, so Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thanks, Doug. First question, you keep referring to the TNP, but we never approved a TNP, right? There was a huge effort by staff a number of years ago doing a transportation master plan, but then we killed it, so I'm a little confused why you're referring to this. Is this from that document? Is that what...
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So the TNP was never adopted, but it's the most recent prioritization effort we went through.
Excellent.
And so we felt that it had merit to be revisited and expanded upon.
Absolutely.
So that was the basis for the first effort.
Okay, cool. And yes, it made me very sad that we never got through that effort. My next thing would be, I don't think we should necessarily second-guess your scoring, I guess. Can you go back to the proposed project list, the mini projects, if you will? So the intersection at Pine Lake Road and Southeast 32nd, is that the one in front of the firehouse?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, I would say that that one and the Sahali at Northeast 28th, you know, all of those, well, I guess they all, yeah, they all have a 1. They are all safety issues, so I think we should absolutely address safety issues first. But my bigger question really is, is anybody at the state ledge level going to even consider projects when we don't have, if they're not on our approved tip? Because I thought that that was kind of a criteria to get grant funding from the state.
I'll take a stab at that, Doug, one.
Go ahead, Doug.
Our intention is that we'll have a tip adopted in the spring of next year. We will have the EIS ideally wrapped up and we'll be embarking upon finally a transportation tip at that time. And so by the time these dollars are appropriated and ready for spending in '22, ideally, we'll have a tip in place that will address this. And these would be projects that either individually or corridor-wise, once we've had that in-depth conversation, are likely candidates that would be on the tip. So I feel comfortable making that request at this time with the anticipation that we'll have a tip sometime next year.
What's the timing when the state legislature would make the decision on which projects would get funding?
That's a January time period typically.
Okay, so we won't have an approved tip when they make that decision?
That's a true statement.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate the work here. I think it's kind of futile. I can't imagine that the state legislature is going to allocate funding to projects that are not on our approved tip when other jurisdictions are going to have that. So, but I appreciate the effort.
Just one caveat. Our last adopted tip, as you know, was in 2019. The elements of these projects are found in the corridors of those projects that are in that last tip. So from that perspective, it is on a former tip, just not on a most current tip.
Yeah, we have to stop saying we don't have a tip because we always go back to the tip that was adopted last, so we do have a tip that was that we were working on.
Well, we haven't adopted a new tip in two years, even though that's...
We are working from the adopted, last adopted tip. That is legally what we are allowed to do. Yes.
Point of order. Can we please stay at the task at hand, which is to give staff feedback on which projects we would prioritize? Not, this is not about whether we have a TNP or a TIP.
Yes.
So can we please stay on topic? Thank you.
Okay, Scott, did you have a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Scott McCall, Deputy City Manager. I just wanted to provide a little extra context in this conversation because I think there's a separation between the requests that Senator Mullet's office made of us, which is more of a, I'll call it a political request versus going after potential grants or set funding sources. The mayor and deputy mayor will recall that the conversation with the senator was around him as the transportation chair in the Senate potentially pulling together a new transportation package. Generally, under that scenario, projects are listed more as just projects and they don't necessarily fall into required buckets. There's not a specific criteria that are wrapped around that it has to be in any way, shape, or form fall into one bucket or another one. It's more of a political ask. So with that in mind, this process was to give us some direction to let the senator know what our priority project would be as he pulls together a potential package, including what the cost would be so that as he is counting dollars, he is figuring, he is including the city of Samamish in that process. Since he made a specific request of us and that process is going on right now, we wanted to make sure and bring it in front of all of you and get some direction so that we didn't miss that window. Future conversations around the tip and all those other kinds of things are certainly relevant and need to happen, but for this process, this is more about not missing out on an opportunity to get in the senator's package. And when, and if that happens this legislative session or potentially next year, that is, remains to be seen, but that's the opportunity at hand right now.
Thank you. Okay, so next is Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. So in looking at the projects that we have on the list, knowing that we're asking for funding for projects, I struggle a little bit with the fact that we have both Issaquah Pine Lake Road on here on the heels of completing the Isqal Falls City Road. We also have Isqal Falls City Road on here as well. Because there's no way, I mean, maybe we get two different grants, maybe we get a single grant, but we are not tearing up two roads on the south end of the plateau simultaneously. And the north end really does need some attention as well as the 228th one. So my preference would be with 228th and Sahali only to, we need some improvements up on the north end. And I'm never favorable, I think I've expressed this before, you know, putting a new signal in is great, but it's not so great if we end up having to tear it back out in order to do the larger project. So if there's any way to consider that, I guess, when we're putting in a new signal, that would be great. consider that, I guess, when we're putting in a new signal, that would be great. But as far as Issaquah Falls City Road goes, I'm reticent to go back and ask for a second bite at that apple, but I don't know. I mean, maybe Senator Mullet will give us some kind of indication as how that might fall when we just use the money we were supposed to use for phase two for phase one um, on the, on the over, overages we have there. But I think that 228th, um, Av-Southeast project um, will definitely need our attention. So, these are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next is Councilmember Trine.
Sorry, I forgot to lower my mic.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other questions. Thoughts? Okay, um, Councilmember Ross. Councilmember Ross, did you have a, your hand up?
I did. I, I was talking on mute.
Oh, okay.
On these, um, step two project list, do you have any ROM cost estimates on any of these? How, how, how much, how would I rank these bite sizes? I'm, I'm, it, I'm, when I look at priority, I also want to look at the total cost. And you broke it into bite-sized pieces, which is really nice and really good approach. But now what is that conclusion? And, and really crude numbers, uh, is acceptable at this point?
Our, our, our target was to look at a project in the three, three to five million dollar range um, of, of an ask, which might then, um, equate to four to eight million dollars of an improvement, depending upon what we were doing. So that's kind of the, the, the universe of what we were contemplating.
Okay, and so these generally are roughly in that same range?
Yeah. To do, yeah, to rebuild the, you know, the roundabout and convert it to a signal or make it a signalized roundabout and, and modify the intersection and the approaches. You know, you're, you're in, you're into easily a four to five million dollar project, uh, depending upon what you're doing. You know, a signal is going to run you a million and a half to, you know, three million dollars, depending upon how much we're going to widen out to account for the future, as Deputy Mayor talked about. Uh, and so you get into those kinds of, you know, framework of three to five, maybe six million dollar total project. And that's why we, we went to a secondary bite-sized achievable approach, you know, in each, from each of those corridors.
Okay, so none of these stand out as much more expensive than the other?
Relatively speaking, if five million dollars is your upper limit, um, they're in that ballpark together.
Okay, okay. And, and I do have a little bit of concern about bringing Issaquah Falls City Road forward for some of the reasons that Deputy Mayor mentioned. We've already done phase one using the full grant and I don't know if that will be as receptive on that one. So that's my comment.
Okay, and then, um, I might put in my input would be, I, I would, my number one project would be that roundabout primarily because it's right by that fire station. And, um, every time I go past there, I just cringe. Um, it's, that roundabout just, it's, it's just awful. So that would be my number one, uh, primarily because of, just for safety. Um, and then hitting safety, my number two would be Sahali. Uh, the, uh, the, what, either one. You could go the light that's needed on the north end because there was just an accident again there this week, a nasty one. Or you could go with the fact that the school district, um, working with the school district site. So either one of those. Um, or then the last one of the four would be the Issaquah, um, Falls City. So I would go in that order. Councilmember Odell.
Just one other bit of information, TR 05 is also a bus stop.
Okay, do we have?
Do you think we have direction? Um, yeah, I've been taking notes. Um, yes, I think, so I think the next steps for staff would be to put a memo together, um, and send it back to council for, um, final my op.
Okay. Excellent.
Be back. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Okay, then the next thing up is discussion on the 2022 legislative priorities.
Karen, we're down to two minutes.
Time goes fast. Okay. What is the will of the council at this point in time? And we have somebody on for public comment.
Let's sit down aside to postpone and decide on to you next time.
Running out of runway. I have to agree with Deputy Mayor on this one.
Okay, I will propose that we extend to 12:15.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? Aye. Aye. Nay. I mean, I oppose. Okay. So going on for discussion of the 2022 legislative priorities, and that is going to be Mr. Sugg.
Yes, uh, good evening and thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilman, and Mr. City Manager. My name is Mike Sugg. I'm your senior management analyst. And tonight we are here for the first discussion on priorities for the 2022 state legislative session, which will begin in about three months on January 10th. Uh, council may not have had an opportunity to review the pack materials tonight, which were republished a bit earlier today. Uh, so I'll just quickly walk through those and then turn it over for discussion. There are a couple items in your packet tonight. Uh, exhibit one is a list of some potential legislative priority ideas for the council to consider. And the second is the city's 2021, uh, state legislative agenda, which is included as a reference. Uh, I will, I have pulled up exhibit one of the agenda materials and I just want to confirm that you can see the, uh, the document titled Potential 2022 Legislative Priorities on your screen. Is that showing up for everybody?
Yes.
So I just wanted to note that this list is not exhaustive and the council may have additional thoughts that are not contained here. Um, as a bit of quick background, as you know, in past years, we've developed a list of focused priorities built around a few key themes, including transportation, Kopee, Kopee recovery, and transit. And that's generally how this exhibit is organized. Our legislators get hit with a lot of different requests from many different jurisdictions, groups, and other organizations. And keeping our request concise and focused on the city's needs, as we have been in the past, uh, may lead to better outcomes. It's also the approach that AWC recommends. So looking at exhibit one, which is on your screen right now, we have, uh, the transportation bucket. And in the past, we would have listed potential transportation funding priorities, but Public Works was kind enough to address that as part of the previous agenda topic. And we got a lot of great feedback, uh, in that discussion just now. So we'll move on to the stormwater bucket. And here we have, uh, two potential items. The first is the Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan, uh, and a project that would resolve flooding issues on Issaquah Falls City Road near Endeavor Elementary School. And after talking with our stormwater team, these were the two items that we came up with. Uh, in past years, uh, unlike in past years, there are no fish passage culvert projects that are ready to include on this year's, uh, list. Pine Lake Creek Basin Clan, Plan, like the Zakkus Creek and Laughing Jacobs Creek Plans, uh, will result in actions the city can take to improve the overall health of that basin. And given that Pine Lake Creek is one of the few remaining streams in which Kopee have been observed, this project would tie into our past practice of including a request related to Kopee preservation on our list of priorities. Note, however, that this project is currently included in our 2022 budget at $200,000. So state funding is not critical in order for this work to proceed. Uh, the other potential, uh, priority would improve Issaquah Falls City Road uh, near Endeavor Elementary School so that it no longer experiences flooding during heavy rains. This project was one of the options presented just now in the, the previous presentation under, uh, the, the, the number TR 08. And I'll just move past my notes here because we've already had a chance to discuss that one. Our next bucket, uh, of potential priorities is transit. And the two items listed here will look very familiar. We have, uh, the priority relating to employer shuttles that we've had on our legislative agenda for the past few years, as well as a request for increased transit service. And our lobbyists who will be attending the council's meeting next week for our next discussion on priorities can speak to these a bit more when they attend the meeting, but, uh, both of these priorities are a bit of a challenge to accomplish in their own way, although certainly not impossible. Um, and they can be included on our list again this year if it is the council's desire. And then finally, uh, just looking further down the list on exhibit one, we have a bucket called Other. And, uh, these likely wouldn't be our main priorities, but a selection could be included on the backside of our one-page graphic, as we've done in the past. And in the interest of time, I won't go through each of these right now. There are about six items under this list, but they are in your packet if you would like to review them. Again, this, uh, exhibit one is not an exhaustive list and we are definitely open to other suggestions. And as mentioned, next week, our lobbyist Luke Esser and Nick Federici will be joining us for another discussion on legislative priorities. They've written up an informational memo that would be in next week's packet. And they'll also be available to answer all your questions on topics such as the supplemental budget for 2022, uh, or any specific pieces of legislation. Tonight, we're really just looking for council's initial thoughts to help us prepare for next week. And with that, I will turn it back to the mayor for discussion.
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. Um, my thoughts relative to this, and it's, um, I know this is a study session, it's just kind of, we threw everything out to see what would stick. Um, I think my preference would be a, a far more pared down list as we kind of work this one. Um, as far as stormwater goes, I would only put one project in there. And I would go with the Pine Lake Creek Basin Plans. Uh, essentially for the same reason, I just kind of tried to put that one on the back burner. For the transportation, um, thing that we just talked about is that I don't know that we want to bring back up Issaquah Falls City Road for funding when we just moved the funding we just had from this space to another one. Um, and this one is not, um, ready to go, right? We haven't done a whole lot of designer planning, so um, it's not what I would consider to be shovel-ready. As far as transit goes, um, I definitely think we should stay with the employer, um, shuttles thing. And again, I think if we want to make a greater impact with our legislative priority asks than asking for, you know, one, maybe two things, um, but we're really wordy here. And while I totally support the increased, um, city transit service, the reality is, is that the legislature is not going to do that for us. That is Kinkeny Metro and Town Transit, and the legislature is probably not going to move that needle for Simamish. Um, but I think really putting our, um, efforts behind this, these employer shuttles is a first step in getting that metro monopoly lifted. And I think with the employers that we have running through Simamish, it would be a huge help. Um, so I think we should, while I totally support, again, increased city transit service, the, the likelihood that the legislature is going to be able to help us out with that is far more limited than them being able to help us out on the employer shuttles with, um, the, the bills that are listed there. And then on the other, I know this is kind of the, the backside, if you will, of our legislative priorities, but we get so little time with the legislators, they get bombarded from multiple municipalities. Is that, again, this is one more of those lists that I think we need to pare down a little bit, or maybe it's just bullet pointed rather than having the, the subbullets underneath each one of these. And because some of these probably fall under the same bucket as SCA or AWC, I think we can just simply state that if they fall under that same bucket and just say we support AWC and SCA's legislative priorities as well. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
If I could, uh, Mayor, just add a point to that, uh, just a point of clarification, this list wasn't intended to be our, our final list. This was just a range of potential options with the thought that we would pare it down very significantly. Uh, so all these bullet points are more just for the council's background information. We'd have a much more concise final package for presentation to our legislators. So very much appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, no, thanks, Mike. And I know you've been kind of the subject matter expert on, um, very concise um, legislative priorities for us in the past. So I, I know that you weren't going to put all of this um, on a 11 by 14 page and make it our new legislative priorities. I was just kind of giving my two cents on kind of just for further distilling it down, um, for the purposes of kind of getting more bang for our buck if we get the 30-second elevator speech with a legislator. Yeah, so anyway, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, next up, I've got Councilmember Trine, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Hey, Mike, so the only, um, on the stormwater one, yeah, I like the first one on the basin plan, but I'm wondering if there, because one of the other areas that floods and also might be, uh, something that we could help out is on 244th Avenue. I think it's just south of like Northeast 22nd Street, we have a culvert issue there that creates flooding. I, Doug and a group took me out on a tour two years ago when I first came on to council. And so I'm wondering if, if we could look into that. I think it's, uh, feeds into Patterson Creek, which then feeds into Allen Lake, or maybe it's, I, maybe I said that in reverse and it's Allen Lake to Patterson Creek and then down the hill. And, and that is Simamish and it's also our, our annexation area is across the street. So if we look at, you know, a big picture of the Simamish and the future, that might be a, a project that would, um, we could look at, are there fish in it? It, it's now a creek that has water in it all year long and there's a culvert problem there. So I would, if we could look into that and see if that's something that, uh, we could add to that stormwater list, I, I think that'd be a, a good second to the Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan. It's, it's a smaller project and maybe the cost would not be, it'd be something we could actually get done. Thanks.
Certainly. Yeah, we can bring back that information for you next week.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, um, when it comes to road projects, uh, and we're going to, you know, the state legislature, it just, I, it just kind of just hit me as I was looking at this list right now that, you know, at the state level, the, the improvements that we need down on 202 would be more interesting um, because it's a multi-jurisdictional, um, and the state would be involved, right? So I'm wondering if we should have the intersection at Sahali at 202 on there, or, you know, the intersection, um, over by the Whole Foods where we, again, have choke points. Um, and it, you know, it's a state road. So that's something to consider. I know it's not on our shortlist. But yeah, like we had it there before. Uh, those, those are still not done and they're still, you know, the two biggest problems we have on the north end for sure. So I, I would think that at a state level, those should still be there. And I don't know why I didn't think about it when we're looking at the list for Senator Mullet. It just kind of hit me looking at this. So I still think those are, are, are big and important projects that we should have on the list. Um, I would agree with stormwater. I do not see how we go back to the state legislature and ask for anybody with anything with Issaquah Falls City Road in it. Uh, I think that's just a mistake. When it comes to transit, I would probably not call it employer shuttles. I, I kind of like the, more the idea of, of saying lifting the, the monopoly because I don't think it's limited to employer shuttles. I think it could be any shuttle, like the city could have a shuttle, right? Because, uh, you know, once that, once the, uh, uh, light rail opens up at Marymore, shuttling people from Simamish to Marymore should be a top priority. Uh, that would be our single best way of relieving congestion and doing a lot of good for the environment. So, um, I think we should just kind of rename that maybe. I agree, uh, with Deputy Mayor, increasing transit service is not, this is not the, the right body for this. And, um, for the list, the other list, I like the Public Works Trust Fund. I like the Support for Local Government Trans, uh, Transportation Funding Sources. I like the Support for Local Government Transportation Funding Sources. I feel like the other ones are a little, I don't know, they're a little bit nebulous. And again, I think if we're going to the state legislature, it needs to be specific. We want you to do X, right? We want, and so I think we need to be very specific. So, and again, I think a shorter list is better. The one thing I don't see on here, though, I don't see anything around, you know, really climate. And I know you kind of list in the middle of that list the K4C, saying that we support that. But I really think that with climate being such an issue, you know, do we want to throw our support behind a very specific climate priority? Like, you know, increasing the electrification of the infrastructure, or, you know, something like that, because that's going to have a big impact on our city and the region in terms of, you know, the quality of the air and just the environmental impact. So I would like to see us pick one or two environmental, climate-related items and add those on here as well. And I also, I guess, one question on the employer shuttles, have we reached out to Microsoft or Amazon to find out, like, when and if they're going to resume shuttle service? Because I don't believe either one of them are running shuttles right now. And I don't know when they have a plan to resume that and what that's going to look like.
Yes, Councilmember Stewart, I don't have that information offhand.
So again, I support it, I think it's important, but timing might be odd, because we might be asking for, you know, employer shuttles when there aren't any.
Okay, Councilmember Odell.
Thanks.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilmember Odell, sorry. Would now be the time to say, we also want to put together a list for our lobbyists for King County? Or would that be a separate topic? Because I think the increased city transit service would go on there. I think our desire, you know, to have more for, what was the other thing that we talked about earlier? And that makes me think, I'm sorry, Councilmember Odell, but the other thing here is, do we want to ask for an extension on the comp plans here? Do we want to advocate for that? So that the work that's going to come back from the Affordable Housing Committee, we all have time to incorporate that. I'm sorry, Councilmember Odell, thanks.
I agree, Councilmember Stewart, that we probably need a King County list. In addition to what she's suggesting, I'd also put funding for the sewer system that we talked about earlier.
Thank you, that was it.
Okay, on this one, under roads, I would include the Sahale and SR 202 intersections, along with the East Lakes Semamish Parkway and 202 intersections. I'd also put in Support for Local Government Transportation Funding Sources and the Public Works Trust Fund. After that, I would put in, under a different category, Pine Lake Creek Basin Plan. And I think I would stop at that. So thank you.
Okay.
Reality is good when you're talking to the legislature. You can always have what I call triple canopy backup. But the main thing is going to be this one single piece of paper talking points.
Okay, and then my priorities, I would do the 202 projects, both of them, the one by the Gray Barn, Sahale, and then also the one by Whole Foods. And then the stormwater, the 244th Allen Lake project issue, which I know you're gathering information on. I think that's going to be probably a bigger issue than what we're thinking, but I think that would be a good one. And then also the Public Works Trust Fund. And I do think we want to, well, the stormwater, I think that's on there. So I do think we want to have on there something with the transit, but I'm not sure necessarily, I don't think we have enough information on what the employers are doing yet. And that might fall under our King County list.
Karen, how about number three, Support for Local Government Transportation Funding Sources?
Yep. Okay, Councilmember Stewart?
I have a quick question. I think, Mike, you said that the lobbyists will be here next week to discuss this? Because I would like to ask, I know two councilmembers brought up this, you know, new potential flooding issue, but I would like to get their input. I do think it's important that whatever we put on here are things that are, you know, what we term shovel-ready, or they're really ready to go. Just because, again, when the legislature is making those decisions, and they usually have, you know, 10 or 20 or 100 times more things to fund than they have funding for, the things that are really ready to go are going to get it. So we might not quite be ready, this legislative session, for that project, since we're just now starting to gather the information. So, again, not that I'm not supportive of it, but I think things need to be, you know, in the chute, so to speak.
Well, first off, we'll get all the information from King County. We may be surprised at how much they're done with. Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Councilmember Odell?
Another question, so much as a comment. I agree with what Pam just said. We're not quite shovel-ready on this 244th project yet. But also, we may discover that it is a fish-bearing creek, and if there are andromedous fish in there, that will open up a whole different source of funding.
Correct, Tom. I agree with you there.
I agree.
So are we done with this one?
Please.
Okay, Mike, so do you have everything that you need?
Yes, this has been a very helpful discussion, and I'll just offer, if there are any follow-up questions that you may have forgot to ask tonight, please do email them to us, and I'll work with our lobbyists to try and get answers in advance of next week's meeting.
Excellent. Okay. Do we still have? Yeah.
Do we have a member of the public?
Well, she's checking.
Mr. Stickney, would you like, could you raise your hands if you'd like to make public comment? I don't see him raising his hand.
Okay. Okay, we do not have anybody, we only have the ones, we do not have public comment this evening.
Move to adjourn.
Okay. And it is a study session, so we don't even have to have a second for that. Meeting is adjourned.
Good.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.